There's bad mojo here. Or you make it worse.
Yes.
That would be worse.
Okay, good morning.
Everyone, it is a couple of minutes after 8:30. We'll call the meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for everybody being here on a snowy Saturday morning. SCTV for taping. And we'll begin with public audience. Would anyone like to speak? Yes, please.
To the beautiful residents of Simsbury, does it seem reasonable or suspicious that our new town manager, Maria Capiola, would be evaluated on her performance and given a $2,500 raise to equal a salary of $155,000 at 7:30 a.m. on Valentine's Day by a Personnel Subcommittee consisting of a paid Democratic First Selectman, Chair Eric Wellman, an unpaid Democratic Selectman, Chris Kelly, and an unpaid Republican Selectman, Sean Askam, without even asking us taxpayers? The only raise we should consider is a raise of suspicion that something does not smell right in Denmark, or should we say Simsbury? In my opinion, it seems sneaky and unnecessary. In addition, my questions from the February 25th meeting were not answered concerning Eric Wellman's hours and possible starting salary of $10,000. Aren't our hired and elected town officials aware that Connecticut is third in line for the 50 states for losing most of its residents? People are leaving and going to find a better way of life and taxation. Why aren't my previous questions from the same town meeting answered in a timely fashion? Why is there a need for an additional social worker? This is the town salary we don't need and it would save the town money. But in turn, of course, the more employees you have, the more salary you can make. Once again, Maria Capiola will get another raise. Being a professional librarian myself, as far as the library is concerned, there is no need for a business librarian at all. Another $69,850 saved. Our reference department in the Simsbury Public Library does an excellent job. Why not give the first line of defense our reference librarians a raise, not the library directors, Lisa Karim? Why are all the Deep Water Wind meetings in an executive session? How much money is the town getting from the Deep Water Wind or indirectly the National Power Grid for use of our land? What are the long-term effects of the solar panels on our land? Are there any studies to date? The technology is so new. Please look at Cheshire's application, which I have with me. Why aren't we getting similar services, like towns with similar mill rates, like Cheshire and South Windsor? Cheshire includes trash, recycling, and a pickup day for bulky items like appliances or sofas once a year. West Hartford has their fall leaves vacuumed up by a big machine, if the leaves are raked to the curb. Could it be because our politicians and department heads are getting raises? What happened to empathy for neighbors? I agree with one of my constituents who mentioned at the February 25th meeting that the police overtime should be curbed. What type of contract does Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance have with the town that the town should raise their budget? Why can't the town make a better contract with another ambulance company? Why is there no competition for ambulance service in the area? Why aren't all of our budget meetings already scheduled way in advance like Cheshire's? A brief synopsis should be included, just like I have here. And here for the trash. And here for Cheshire Branks III in the country for people moving out. And I have the information concerning the solar panels, which Cheshire allowed, unfortunately, because they are being sold to Cheshire after 20 years when precipitation can actually get into them. At least they have the option. I don't think it's such a good idea. Why is there no competition for ambulance service in the area? Why aren't all our town budget meetings already scheduled way in advance like Cheshire's? A brief synopsis could be included on a one-page list.
Thank you, Ms. Eckey.
Maria Capiola, can you please enlighten the public since time is of the essence?
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in public audience? Okay. Then we will move on to the overview of the budget and we'll begin with revenue and budgeting assumptions from Maria.
Good morning. Thanks for joining us on this snowy Saturday morning. And many thanks, too, to the leadership team for all of their work and helping to prepare for today. Very, very quick review of the budgeting assumptions that we used on the revenue side. Again, this is just a quick snapshot that we shared on Monday evening regarding our grand list. As you can see, we had a small amount of growth in the grand list this year, a little under 1%. And this, again, just shows you what we used in terms of budgeting our anticipated tax Again, the state cap on the mill rate for motor vehicles remains at 45, so for budgeting purposes, we assumed a uniform mill rate across the board for motor vehicle, real estate, and personal property taxes. The governor's proposed budget was also released just a few days before my budget was released to you. So we did incorporate his revenue estimates into the proposed budget that you saw on Monday evening. And under that, the ECS budget would increase slightly. However, he did also resurrect the concept of the Teachers Retirement System Assessment proposal. The net impact of the increased state revenues, but with that assessment, was a decrease of about $244,000. And again, we did include that for budgeting purposes.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So a couple of years ago, when Malloy threatened it and it was 33%, that retirement number was a lot higher.
Right.
So it's only an 8% difference, but what's changed?
Sure. So we are still trying to get details of how the current proposal would work, but our understanding is that this would be for essentially teachers who are currently here and moving forward, as opposed to paying for liabilities of the past, whereas with Malloy's proposal, we would have been paying for liabilities of the past.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And in terms of who would get the bill for that, whether it would be the town or the Board of Ed, that is unsure. We're unsure at that point. So we did show at this point, not really hitting against the town budget or the Board of Ed budget, but just sort of our overall budget, since we don't have more information available at the moment. And then the last budgeting assumption we used is we budgeted a tax collection rate of 98.5%. That is the rate that's been used for a number of years now, and we included that in our assumptions. And again, just a quick snapshot of our overall revenues. And a little over 91% is our property taxes. Again, that unfortunately is just, we lack the statutory authority in Connecticut at the local level to really diversify our revenue base in a meaningful way. So as you know, we are very reliant on our property taxes. And that's it for revenues this morning.
Okay. Then we will move on to where we go through the various departments. Sean, were you going to ask a question?
No, I just was thinking.
Okay. All right. We'll begin with the Town Clerk section, and Maria will handle that portion. Or Melissa?
We'll do it together. So due to the snowy roads this morning, our town clerk has a bit of a drive, and she also has her daughter's birthday party today. So we are going to, Melissa and I are going to do our best to cover the town clerk's budget and the registrar's budget.
She knows the rule, right? No comments, an automatic 10%. I thought it was 15. All right. Let's do this.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the town clerk's budget probably means a 2.4% increase, just about $5,500. This is driven primarily by contractual salary increases and a small bump in training under conferences and education, which we'll talk about a little more further down. There's three employees in this office, our town clerk and our two assistant town clerks. This office for season maintains many records concerning real estate transactions, vital records, election meeting minutes, various types of licenses. Everything the office does is much driven by state statute of law ordinances, town charter. All right, so for fiscal year '20, I believe this is an annual grant that the town clerk's office applies for. It's the Connecticut State Library Historic Documents Preservation Grant. This is used for the preservation of the town's permanent records. We are expecting that we will be eligible to apply for a $7,500 grant in the coming year, which is an increase of $1,000 for the grant that we received this year. This year, the grant funds were used, at least, to install an additional storage unit in the vault. Secondly, very exciting, the town clerk's office will begin accepting credit cards in their office. This is going to be huge for customer service. I think people often do come to the office and don't realize we don't accept credit cards. If they don't have cash or a check, they end up having to leave and come back. So that would be great for customer service. Similarly, the office is planning to start accepting deeds and conveyance taxes electronically as well. And finally, a goal for the town clerk's office for the coming year is to implement a more formal records management program, and hopefully that can kind of serve as an auto for other departments to move forward as well. So as I mentioned, part of the increase is due to negotiated contractual step increases. There is a slight bump, a very slight bump in overtime, and we'll talk more about the reason for that in a moment. There's an increase in conferences and education. This will allow the town clerk to pursue her certified municipal clerk designation. And finally, a coding change. You'll see $13,000 moved from contractual services to a line item called computer software. Actually, you'll see a number of those after the budgets today. That's a new computer software line, just for transparency, safe to start showing my bulk software-related items in that line. So for fiscal year '20, the town clerk's office is expecting a small bump in revenue due to the land record vendor that has updated their subscription fees. So the town clerk's office will collect $1.25 per copy that is printed at home versus the $1 that is currently collected. The go-live date is actually next week, but fiscal year '20 will be the first full year collecting this movie. Okay. And then that small bump in overtime you see is related to the increased number of absentee ballots that the town clerk's office has been issuing. Some people don't realize that absentee ballots actually are handled by the town clerk's office leading up to an election, not the registrar or voter's office. In this past November, 2018 state election, they issued 63% more absentee ballots than the 2014 state election, and that number is expected to continue to increase.
Even though only half the number of people will vote, the election coming up?
Yes, and we'll have more elections next year, which we'll talk about in the registrar votes.
Yeah, from a turnout standpoint, we have to come out. So you think that the number of absentees will cut out proportionally?
People are also, I think, realizing that they can vote absentee.
I think there's two things. I think there was an increase in the amount of absentee ballots, and then there is also a mandate from the state that the amount of absentee ballots purchased may be significantly actually in the current year as well. That was state mandate. That was not something that we did.
We will also briefly talk about the number of primaries and elections we have coming up in a couple of slides.
Is the 14 numbers, or what about the 16 number?
We were just comparing state election, state election. I believe those were gubernatorial years that she used for comparison purposes.
Yeah, we're in a municipal year, I guess. So those numbers are.
So there'll be a couple of slides. Should we maybe skip ahead to that slide, go back?
We'll just skip ahead to that slide. 100.
Yeah, so next year, we'll have the municipal. In November, we'll have the standard budget referendum in May. It will definitely be the Democratic primary and possibly Republican primary.
It'll be in '20.
It'll be in '20.
It'll be in '20. Primaries in '20, not '19.
But it will be in the spring of 2020, which is fiscal year '20.
You're right. Okay. You're right. I was thinking.
Very early.
We're two line items in, and we're hammering ourselves over $500. We move on to the next thing. We're not going to get out of here.
No, we're setting the tone.
You guys, all right, this is like, you know.
Hope y'all brought your sleeping bags.
I'm trying to make sure you miss your flight. I'm going to get a sleeping bag and a lantern before it's on your. My point is, is that, I don't think. When we're looking for $500 later, remember that one.
Parking lot. I mean, right? We identified potential places, so put it on the parking lot.
Can I just ask a question while we're doing the minutia? Are there fees associated with the credit card transactions?
Thank you.
Great. So right now, most of our customers, that fee is passed off to them. As part of that particular project, something I'd like to do is bring a comprehensive fee schedule to you all to make sure that we're consistently using methods across departments that are using electronic payment methods.
Because sometimes there's a convenience fee added to a transaction, which actually puts the fee back on the consumer.
Right. And for most of our transactions, that is the case.
Yes.
So that's what we're going to do in the next.
So is that what we're doing?
I would like to, again, I would like to have that uniform across the board.
That's my question.
And again, my intent would be to bring a uniform fee schedule to you all, and that way we can also cover things such as, you know, if we have insufficient fees, return checks, things of that nature. I just want to clean up that fee schedule, so that will be part of that project.
From a revenue budgetary standpoint, we're assuming someone else is paying the fees, or are we paying the fees?
Assuming somebody else would be paying the fees.
Yeah.
Any other town clerk's office questions before we go over to the rest of the room?
Yeah, just, Melissa, can you just go back to what the revenue is? The revenue number? Yeah, no, I know. Okay, thanks.
And just quickly, I would really like to commend Erica's efforts, particularly on the revenue estimates for town clerk. We had a number of fees that were just sort of lumped together in really large pools. And I think, you know, working with the finance staff, she did a great job. I think we're moving forward accounting for the various revenues that the clerk's office collects in a much more transparent manner, and I'm just very appreciative to them for their efforts to clean that up this coming budget year.
The, oh, all right, I like these. You mentioned the certification cost, right? And which I'm all, I'm 100% behind anybody achieving higher designations and vetting themselves career-wise. That is something that is ongoing and recurring, and what expires, and we have to re, so this will, it adds to the EKG, it'll be something that's down and then up, this 100% increase?
Yeah, so there are ongoing continuing education courses. It's a process where, right, she'll need to, I think it's about a two-year process of taking courses. She has to sit for the exam, et cetera, but then once she receives the designation, there will be some continuing education courses that she'll need to take to maintain the certification.
But not at this level of cost, probably.
I wouldn't anticipate, right, as much as the initial.
That is a big increase there.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
For the registrar voters, the budget as proposed is a 4.1% increase, or it's about $5,000. This budget does include a salary adjustment for the registrars, deputies, and some poll workers, select checkers at the polling locations. My understanding is the registrars haven't had an increase since we moved to '14, and the deputies haven't had one in 10 years. So this budget does include that. As we discussed, there are three elections planned for fiscal year '20 with possibly a fourth. Related to that is an increase in the copying and printing services. We will need additional ballots for, to accommodate, you know, the number of elections that we plan to have. And secondly, the office is planning to do a canvas of the voter rolls to clean it up to make sure they're accurate for the elections.
Any questions?
We've turned this down for five years. Not suggesting we turn it down again, but this has been an item that.
That comes.
We've said we've been at the increase since ours, and when we get down to the nickel and dimes in the parking lot, this one never seems to make it to the top, et cetera. So I'm fine with it at this point, but again, when we start fighting over 500 bucks or 1,000 bucks, this one matters.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Melissa. Next, we'll turn to IT and Rick Vizano.
Rick, what's the passwords?
Please.
You can give them to me.
Right. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Rick Vizano. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the Department of Technology and Management. Still have the old connotation title of Data Processing Manager. But in this proposed budget here, that number 330 is a 61% increase for $125,000. That is reflective of a new practice now where, for transparency, the IT department from its original origin was a split position between the Board of Ed and the town. So this year, for the financial mechanism, we're showing you the big amount, which is probably appropriate to describe the department. We're two full-time employees. Some of the operations that we do oversee is pretty much everything on the municipal side, public safety side, public works. And we do support Simsbury Housing Authority on a part-time basis. You know, if they need it and they're a GM, we'll run down there and help them as well. We support both on-prem and cloud-based. Our trend is really to push things to the cloud. On-prem, hardware, software costs, subscription costs are really hurting the department right now. You'll see a slight increase in the subscription piece of it as well. Collaboration with departments on new technology, we always have an open dialogue with departments in what they're doing and what they see. Perfect example is the town clerk. When Erica was going that way, we conversed, met a couple of times, and that solution there, which was a good one, is really we're pushing that off to the cloud as well. Even though her system is a hybrid, because they do have visitors that come in and want a quick response and a payment of index records or whatever it be, so we have that database resonant, and it also sits in the cloud for their nightly backups, disaster recovery plans. We do control the website with service to content and management. We're still with the same company we've been. We've gone out probably three times for RFPs, and we're continuing to work with Civic Plus. And that 92% completion of support services within 24 hours. The other person that's in the IT department is Brett Marshan, and we're pretty much on the run most of the time. But I think that 92% for the departments that we oversee is a great number, and it really just leaves us 8% of the time working on researching and other technologies that are out there. Focuses for the upcoming year are cybersecurity. We're currently in a cybersecurity employee awareness program. This is the second year that we've done it. It's a great program. We've had some instances already within town that have been stopped by the knowledge and the awareness that the employees have. So we're continuing that for this next year. That's probably the best thing where the human factor in cybersecurity is ideal, is really to educate the person that's sitting at that screen. The other thing we're going to be moving forward to, which is on this, is that we're moving to a more mobile environment, not tied down to a desktop, so now we're tied down to phones or to tablets and whatnot. So the cybersecurity criminals are really attacking those devices. So our next step is really get the awareness, and then probably in two years or a year is try to develop a mobile device management system, which will control all our mobile devices that we need. Security levels that we have, pretty much the end of last or the beginning of this year, we went to a new generation firewall, Palo Alto's, and they support the library and town hall and law enforcement and everything else. So we're kind of like the hub, and everything has to come to us and get screened out, and that has been a very, very, very good move on our part as a whole. And it was fun by the town, and we're loving it right now. Fiber optics, the last remaining satellite location right now before, you know, if there's another need, if the town shifts to other buildings and whatnot, is really the Simsbury Farms complex. That has been a hard-to-reach area. It's amazing where Jerry Tonner passed the Arts Director, and now Tom, their main thing is really service, and they are a service-oriented, you know, unit, and they need internet, and the internet provided by, unfortunately, Comcast, and where they are is just, it's not up to it. So the town, a couple of years back, decided to, you know, venture out and get fiber optics up there. It's currently under what is called Make Ready Work. The town had to pay for five poles, which is part of the process that they have that PURA sets up. And what it does say, okay, you have your municipal gain, your space on the poles, so they move everything around. If a pole is not of certain specification, we have to pick it up. So the only work that's being done now is by Frontier and Comcast, and once they're done, we can string our fiber, and it'll be connected. So unfortunately, the project's been going on, and this is sometimes the bad thing that happens when other towns, and other town spaces as well, there's no really clear shoot or avenue to get this stuff up on the poles and get it operating. There is a pole administrator, which is a quasi-ever-source entity that we go through, and they really just monitor it. They don't really implement the plan in the development of the pole. So that project, this project started actually a year and a half ago, and we're still waiting. The next bullet point here is the 365 Host Exchange Service. The town has decided to take their host, their exchange box, their email, instead of bringing it back into hardware dependence, dependency, software licensing, archiving, security, we're going to take that presence and put it in the cloud in a private government space where federal governments are with their email services, so we're going to port in that. That's going to happen within the next six months with that project. And then the updated disaster recovery plan, where we are right now, is things constantly change, as technology, as you know, and there's always a different way to protect yourself from recovery, or I should say, to make yourself more viable and more resistant to some type of danger. So one of the things that we're working there is rewriting the whole thing. The last time it was rewritten was, what was it, 2008? It's like 2008, so it's been 10 years now. And the technology's changed, so we're going through a rewrite on that. The thing that I just want to note there that's not on that screen is, we're thinking about also, and other towns are starting to collaborate with each other, is that we take a disaster recovery box and we put it in their town, in their space, and they would put one in our space, because we're all tied to the CBN Nutmeg Network, which is a fiber backbone through the state. So that means I could port my stuff to Manchester, Manchester could port to mine. So that type of outlook is still out there for us to operate, okay, which makes a lot of sense. Because in the event of a disaster or something like that, we could always get online with that space. As I said, the full-time salary now reflects the true, and that's the number that is there. So there was really no net impact to the overall budget for the town. The 2.6% of contractual services, that's the migration to email, to the exchange, and cybersecurity training, pretty much it's it. Thing that I do want to note that contractual services for an IT department is ever-increasing. They charge for everything. So if we got, you know, on a police side, we have Trend Micro, which is a cloud-based spam scrubber piece of software, they're anticipated to go up in price. So instead of taking that stuff in, we're just pushing it off, because they're starting to charge back. And the model's being accepted by everybody. If you start reading, you know, about Microsoft, Microsoft's going to trend that way. And what they're saying is that, well, you know what? You don't need on-premise software anymore. You can run it from the cloud, but we're going to charge you now. It's not a one-time shot. We see it for an expenditure, now you're going to pay, you know, $12 a person or a seat. So that's, and I'm sure in years to come, that number's going to go up. Okay? And then the $9,700 reallocation piece is that same thing as in the other department. Transparency, we're breaking out our costs and making software hardware-based, and that's where that's coming from. That first bullet has been in the making with the town initiative for probably two years now. And just recently, they readdressed us to get onto that earlier. We're in the final stages of the whole firewall configuration as And then the $9,700 reallocation piece is that same thing as in the other department. Transparency, we're breaking out our costs and making software hardware-based, and that's where that's coming from. That first bullet has been in the making with the town initiative for probably two years now. And just recently, they readdressed us to get onto that earlier. We're in the final stages of the whole firewall configuration, as well as the state piece of it, and that's criminal justice information systems that they have. It's a backbone for law enforcement in their databases that they share. This is one of the initiatives that you probably heard some years back, where Homeland Security really would like one big, huge database of all this criminal information, and that's what that project is pretty much about, okay? A continued network security assessments, we work with MSISEC, Multi-State Information Security System, and also the Center of Internet Security. They're a Homeland Security nonprofit that every quarter, they penetrate, outside penetration to our networks, and we get reports from it. And once we see the reports, we act on any kind of vulnerability they have. So we will stay with that for sure. There's the mobile fleet that I was telling you about and the data management of it. Network storage and disaster, I think it's two years out. The current network storage that we have right now is outdated, it's been five years, and we're going to go back out to RFP to get new network storage and whatnot. The push there, when you see that, it doesn't, you know, say it per se, but that last comment does, the virtualization, we're just going to push everything to a small rack space that's virtualized, and the push right now, and Maria likes the thought, is really we're pushing everything, instead of buying hardware, hardware, we're just making virtualized desktops for everybody as we move forward.
I'm hearing a trend.
Yeah.
And the costs associated with both those bottom two bullets, that's a year or two in the CNR, like, is something for network storage and virtualization.
And then the CNR project that we have is currently the $40,000 for a phone. We're currently running out an NEC system, it's the 8100 series, and it's time to go. And how we found that out is our previous vendor for the town gave me a call probably about three months ago, and said, we no longer support state contracts for the town. Simsbury, your system's old, and you're going to have to go out and find a new vendor. Luckily, I called DAS at the state level, they had a vendor that was in Durham, I believe, is their town at the Mid, they came back and they support NEC. The $40,000 could be a lot more. We were fortunate, the platform we bought on the NEC was very modular, so they're just going to come in, plug out some modules, plug the new ones in, and we're back up. And I kind of timed it this way, and it worked out, because Newington just went through it, and we converse all the time, and they said they were just down for 12 minutes and that was it. And he jumped twice, we're going one version up, okay? Again, this is going to have an impact on us next year. That $40,000 holds subscription costs for the first year. So that next year, there'll be a bump in that contractual cost, which I think is like $7,000, $9,000 for a phone system a year. Before, the old model was, you buy it, and it's ours, right?
When I saw the $40,000, that took my breath away a little bit, but I have no doubt that that's probably what phone systems cost, and you said it could even go higher than that. I don't want to get too into it at the moment, but are there, are there a range of telephony options that have a range in prices that we can consider?
Yeah, there is. It's a good question, because, you know, I was a hosted VoIP guy right off the bat. I thought it was great. And we've had some shortcomings with that. I think that's more powerful, your thought would be a hosted VoIP system, where it's all cloud-based. So what we did, and I don't want to elongate the discussion, our first pilot that we did, we went to Simsbury Farms. And Jerry Tonner was accepting that, you know, he had problems with his underground cables and everything else, we're going to stick it in the cloud. Well, it didn't work out too well for them. Being a service company, they always had the jitter, that brat-brat-brat, and that kind of thing, because of the connection on the internet. After that pilot, the Board of Education was thinking about it, and they wanted their central office to be that secondary pilot, even though they're tied to the CEN, a more sustainable connection to the internet, they've had their issues as well. And I believe they're moving away from it as well. So the only other footprint we have left is the library leases department. That seems to be running great. They have a couple of little, you know, management issues and administration issues, but it works. So I look at that going back, long-winded kind of discussion, is that I think we're so service-oriented that we can't take a gamble on internet at this point. So just keep it on board. It doesn't say we can't go that way, because it's still going to be VoIP-driven here, and it is VoIP-driven, it's on our networks. And they do have a product, NEC does have a product to go to the cloud. But I think just the importance of always being available through a phone line is important.
But just a follow-up to that, so that, that tethers the individual to the desk, though, this system?
No, so actually, this one here has got a ton more into it. It's now, if you have a mobile phone, you can mobile, you can take your phone, these phones, you can put it to your mobile phone, so on and so forth. And actually, we had a very arcade version of it, and Amy requested to do it on her phone, and we did it, but it had some quirks, you couldn't really control it very well.
Can we do that right now? Changes my life, okay.
Since we're trading up revenue with $50,000 over the month.
There you go.
You got it.
I got $520.
I don't have a phone, so don't call me.
Any questions?
So, I do. So that'll make sense, and what folks will see is a 61% increase, which is not accurate, right, from a...
Overall standpoint, yes.
It's a transparency issue. But what I want to understand is, so we're getting 153 from the Board of Ed? And I'm not trying to give away a secret here, but we're only giving them 113?
Yeah, that's what's indicating.
So would they reimburse us or go to that?
What was the, I didn't bring my last year's budget manual, so, you know, that was, you got me, whatever.
The numbers.
But the, removing that, which I was just beginning, remove the allocation from BOE, I think the year-over-year last year was like twice what it is this year, your budget increase, it's like 13%, I think I did it. Do you remember what?
What that increase was?
Yeah, do you remember what the bigger allocation was?
Yeah, that was the introduction of subscriptions. We had our storage environment, that was easily a $15,000 or $17,000 hit. In this, I'm going to discuss that the last, last year's, is that when we go into contracts and we buy a piece of equipment that's over $100,000, you know, are you showing the true expense of it after that three-year warranty, that three-year period, because you're trying to save money upfront, so I'm going to take a three-year warranty and put it into the purchase price of it. But then when it falls off on year four, boom, your operating expense gets hit, and that's what you saw.
So that, I just only want to understand, but two, I think it's good to point out on Sean's thread that removing that, you know, our budgetary consideration from this year from your department is less than it was for last year, so.
Yeah, it didn't remove at all.
Because at this, really, unfortunately, the people could zero in on that 61% not really.
Not 61%.
It represents 0.55% increase over last year. So to the extent that it's a wash, because we have revenues that offset it, it is a 0.55% increase to our expenditures. So I think it's really important that we be real clear that this is an increase to expenditure that's being offset. Because as you know, when we get into these discussions with the Board of Finance, you know, the expenditures are one thing, the revenue are another thing. So I think it's really important, because it is a very meaningful part of our increase. Do you have a couple of other questions, if I can? You know, both Rick and Maria, this is a conversation that occurred, I've been on the board five years, and we were having it five years ago, and it's really two things. It's one that your time as the manager is more and more sucked into tactical work and kind of tactical parts of special projects versus being able to manage strategically. So one question I have is just, you know, how is that balanced right now? Is that getting worse? Is that getting better? And then the second is, we've had also an extension of that conversation for about five years at least, you know, the concept of, is there some efficiencies that we can have or expansion of impact by looking at integration with the Board of Ed? So I'm really interested, A, in kind of the insights into that, and B, I also, I'm reaching a point where I feel we have kind of a continuous improvement concept that's been out there for four or five years, but we haven't actually seriously tackled it, and it just feels to me that's getting a little bit too long. So with that said, if you can kind of speak to both of those issues?
Yeah, first thing, my daily life is exactly how you put it. It's on the, the management administration piece is probably about 30%, 35% like that, and the rest is all tactical running around supporting that. And the department heads that are here or any employees, that's just, that's the nature of the animal, it's been like that for a while. So, and I would love to get into that, because there's so much stuff out there, like the disaster recovery plan, that we can just make it, you know, iron cat. So that's one thing. The other thing is that we've always had, and the IT department did have that secondary, that third position, I should say. It was cut probably, I think it was three years ago. And once that was cut, it's almost like now we got to strike back to get one. It came up again in discussion at the IT Task Force, and what to do with that position. And I pretty much expressed it as that, with the way we're moving in two years, with the whole storage piece and the virtualization portion that we're in there, we're going to be looking for a different type of care, a different type of position in two years than we can hire right now. So I decided not to put that position in there, and decide, like, say, for the finance department, who's way on demand, is really just leave it alone, and we'll address it, you know, coming up next year. Don't know if that was, you know, the best thing I could do, but in the horizon that I see is that we're going to need another person, and that's going to be a technical person. One, to have that technical drive to move to this new environment we're in, and two, to give me that time where now I can get on the administration piece and the management piece. We had, and it's funny you say that, Chris, is, what was the stand committee? A few days ago, we had an IT steering committee, which we meet with the Board of Ed, and one of the things that we discussed were positions and sharing again. And I brought to the table that, you know, if we go with that third position, which I think we will have to go, that third position, and we're pretty much parallel on the technology platform, what they're doing is that we share a position of this nature, so that's just a virtualization person, and we share them. And they sit here, and they sit at the high school, wherever they need it. So I think the dialogue is there, Chris, but I agree with you too, it's just, it's time to pull the trigger and, you know, get it out of the way. But next year, I'm 100% that you'll see it pop up, especially with the dialogue we're having.
And shared services with the Board of Ed is something I do have a strong interest in, and the superintendent and I have had some preliminary conversations about IT in particular. I do think that there is some potential there if we were able to find a shared services model for IT that worked in terms of maximizing our resources. I was very fortunate, I had come from a shared services IT model previously. It was our last shared services implementation, so I lived through it, we did that in 2007, and within a period of a few years, the improvements that we saw in terms of particularly on that strategic level that Rick was speaking to, that he really struggles having the time to do right now, the leaps and bounds we made, it was just tremendous. And one of the other benefits, when we combined the resources, is that we were really able to hire folks who were more specialized in nature. So we, at our various work sites, whether it was the Board of Ed or the town, had sort of those boots-on-the-ground folks who were doing that sort of help desk support. But when it came to the programming piece, we were really able to have skilled programmers, and it was because we could then deploy that person to the regional high school, or to the public schools, or to the town, or to the health district, that those people were able to serve all of those entities, and we, if we were doing that on our own, we probably would not have been able to have those sort of skilled programmers at that level. So it was sort of using those resources differently, sharing them, sharing a director, and again, we just made leaps and bounds on our technology services. So it's definitely something I think that would be worth exploring further.
Is the financial services software that we're talking about, or technology, whatever you want to call that, a shared service with the Board of Ed?
That is a joint initiative, and our intent is that we would be both using that same software platform and doing that project together.
So the costs of that are shared throughout the town? I mean, I know it's a capital project, but we're...
Right, so it hits, yeah, so it hits the town budget essentially.
And we understand that does cover both the town and the Board of Education.
Correct, that's correct.
So just, what, and this is more a question, Maria, for you, what does the process and timing of really taking a look at the shared model involve?
Sure, so, you know, I'd really like to complete this winter and spring our parks and rec analysis, that work group, sort of implementation of any of those recommendations in terms of, you know, taking out sort of a new possible reorganizational-type initiative. I would say sometime after that work is complete. So if this was a priority for your board, as well as the Board of Education, perhaps the summer. And then we could also discuss, you know, is it IT, is it more than IT? There are lots of possible shared services models for other services as well. Then again, both Amy and I have experience doing shared services with financial management, employee benefits, risk management, facilities, so there could be a whole sort of host of issues that we look at, you know, more comprehensively.
Great, thanks. That's work, that'd be very important to me, thank you. Any other questions for Rick? And I'm sorry, were you, were you finished yet?
Absolutely, thank you.
Good job, good job.
Okay, great, thank you.
Rick, you always answer my questions.
I prefer you just fix my computer.
The extra stuff he adds to the answer that's...
Melissa, would it mess things up if I go a little out of order, just for respect for people's time? Would there be a motion to move out the community services portion?
Especially, you can't move the agenda room.
Oh, we can move it, we just can't add items.
Sure you couldn't, are you sure?
Yeah, so we can change the order, but we can't add new items, if that makes sense.
As long as we don't get in trouble.
Folks okay with that? Do you have consensus?
As long as that's the rule.
Okay. So I don't want to put you on the spot, because you weren't expecting to go for a little while, but Lisa, I just wanted to see if you'd want to present now, so you could enjoy the rest of your Saturday. Oh, you do?
Yes, Kristen's not.
I thought you were talking about Kristen.
Oh, I'm sorry, you know what? It's early. Kristen.
Wait, that's fine, you don't have to change it.
I'm creating issues all over the place. Let's stick with the agenda. All right, Amy Meriwether, Department of Finance.
All right, so I'll take you through the Financial Services Department budget quickly. The financial services budget includes the finance office, the tax office, our assessment office, and then there is a smaller Board of Finance budget. So the total of this year, I think, financial budget is about $836,000, and this is a 6.2% increase from the prior year. You can see in the next four bullets that we have the departments broken out, and how that $836,000 is broken up, and then the individual increases to the departments. For the 7.83 budgeted FTEs, that consists of three full-time people in the finance office, three full-time people in the assessors' office, one full-time person in the tax office, and then one part-time person in the tax office. And then our services in program is our financial management of the cash and treasury functions, our accounting functions, and then our property assessment and tax collection. So far, 19, 20 areas of focus. We are going to focus on maintaining our AAA bond rating, as well as making sure that we have adequate reserves in the bonds. We're looking to invest in a modern financial management system, and that's something that I'll discuss further on the capital slides. Continue to review our policies and procedures for quality, effectiveness, and efficiency, and then maintain our tax collection rate above the 99%, and continue to decrease the amount of outstanding tax balances due. And as you know, one way that we're trying to go about this is through the implementation of the tax sale that you all approved, and we'll have our first one starting in the night. And then continue to value property fairly in a timely manner, and this is something that I'm going to talk through on the next slide, because there was an addition to the assessors' budget for this. So as you can see on this slide, there was about $24,000 added to the assessors' budget for a personal property audit. Although this is a large increase to their budget, as you can see, we're expected to generate revenue of $21,000 to offset this expenditure. And then the last time a personal property audit was conducted was about 10 years ago, so we are definitely due. And then you can see the $15,000 increase in the finance department is mainly related to the full-time salary account, which reflects my salary. The tax collectors' office for the budget increases. For the part-time employee and the seasonal employee, these were just line item corrections from the prior year to reflect what was actually being spent out of these accounts. Under the fiscal year '20 trends and challenges, of course, as the state starts to develop their budget, we'll be continuing to monitor the state's challenges and impact that it's been having on the town. that it's been having on the town. And then something else that's been a challenge for us is our staffing needs in the finance office. You can see that there's a list of items here that are either not getting done due to lack of staff, or if they are getting done, I'm doing them nights and weekends. One of the things, I'm not gonna go through each one, but one of the things I really wanted to focus on is the better internal control management. So, right now, we have an AP person who does AP and payroll. This person adds vendors to the system, they cut the checks, and they mail out the checks. So, basically, we have a person that can create a fake vendor, cut themselves a check, and put it to the purse. To mitigate this, I put in monitoring procedures so that this doesn't happen. All vendor requests go to, our email's in now, to this person, and then they seem to be made. What I do is, if it's a company I don't recognize, I'll do a little research, do a little Google, make sure it's legit. I track all of the check numbers to make sure that they are in sequence, and there's none missing, and then I review all of the purchase orders and all of the invoices before the checks are cut. Another thing related to this position is, because this person does AP and payroll, when she goes on vacation, our assistant finance director takes over the payroll function, as this is something that has to happen weekly, we can need to get paid, but nobody's doing her job while she's gone. And from an internal control standpoint, this is just, it's not as obvious. So, even though we've implemented things to mitigate the risk, the risk is still there, and we are not at a best practice standpoint as far as internal controls are really put.
Can I, so I agree with you, but let me ask you a stupid question. If no one's doing the job, how is it a risk?
Because nothing's getting done, right? So, there's no, nobody can cut checks if she's not cutting checks, right?
Right, but one of the things they found in the internal control worlds, and this is something that the auditors always ask, is if somebody goes on vacation, is somebody doing their job? Because a lot of times, they found that fraud is discovered when somebody does their job while they're on vacation.
So, that, I, I agree with that, so if they're committing fraud, but no one else can commit the fraud while she's out?
Right.
Right. Okay.
And then just about the capital asset piece, automatically, so there's a few things that our staff aren't doing, just due to capacity, there's no time to train, say, the assistant finance director to do, like, the debt management, capital asset management, things of that nature. So, those are things that I've taken on, and I perform, but then there's nobody checking my work. That in and of itself is internal control issue. The auditors do review it, but they don't count as a level of review. Moving on to the CR project, so something that you're familiar with that happens every five years, we have our grand list twenty-twenty-two revaluation coming up, and this slide just gives you a breakdown of some of the data and the funding for that project, for the five-year period. And then lastly, we have our capital project request, which is our financial management software, and as we've previously talked about, this is a joint initiative with the Board of Education. And I just listed some of the things that are expected to come from implementing this new financial software. So, we're expected to get a budgeting software and a capital asset management software. So, currently, these tasks are done via Excel, and Excel is a fabulous tool, but as you know, we stay confident in Excel. We'd be able to implement our positive pay, which is something that is, again, an internal control issue that has been on the audit management comments for quite some time. We have a billing system that, again, we're doing manually right now. We'll be able to upgrade our payroll and human resources processes. So, right now, we have manual handwritten timesheets, we have Excel tracking for our employee leave accruals, and then we're still printing pay stubs. We don't have an electronic method of either emailing out the pay stubs or having an employee portal for them to go and get them. We also see an upgrade in our reporting capabilities, and then we're looking for a software company that's going to be dedicated to new initiatives. Right now, we have a software company that has been sold various times. They have a, a bigger product that they invest all of their resources in, so this product kinda gets, you know, the tail end of things, they get sold multiple times, I think it got these three or four times, that I'm aware of. And so, we're looking for a software company that we're gonna be able to see that they are putting the investment into their products for the long term, and they're not looking to sell, and that, sorry, they're putting money into their projects for growth and enhancements that we can benefit from in the long term. So, I don't know if you're familiar, but one of the big players in municipal is Munis, and they have been around for a very long time, they grow with the times, and their customers have been with them for twenty-five-plus years because of this. So, we're, even if it's not Munis, that is a software company that we're looking to get a new financial management software from.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I just wanna quickly just comment that, you know, on the things you shared with us that are unsustainable, both from, from your time perspective, having to manage, but also not good from a best practices standpoint. This, I think, goes back to the conversation we had with Rick around wanting to look holistically at a, at a shared services model. And my opinion, I think, if we do that analysis, I think, no matter what, I have a recognition that what is happening now is not sustainable for the long term, but I'd be in favor of first doing that analysis and then saying, do we need to add to the department, and what should that look like?
Naturally, to your point, this position is something that we've talked about with the Board of Education, and they also have an interest in sharing this position and the cost related to the position. They, very much like our department, their department, every person has their specific duty, and there's no, there's no retraining against the positions to be able to support somebody when they're out, and they actually did have a couple medical leave situations where two of their key people were out, and they weren't able to have that person step up to help. So, as I included on that slide, succession planning and being able to help out in those times is important as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment, so remember this discussion later on when we talk about capital and the need for additional minds in there. Amy has done a phenomenal job of, of getting a handle on, where we had three or four finance directors in the last six years, all of the different styles and everything, so it's, it will be a very enlightening discussion this afternoon on some challenges we have down the road, and, again, an area to focus on in our, our government budget is, is this as a result of that, so.
I'd also just say that, as a business owner in a corporate environment, I'm not a fan of shared services because I never feel I get what I need out of, but it, sometimes it's the only way to justify getting what you want. So, when you do go through, we do go through the project analysis of whether shared services or not, just don't chase down the rabbit hole of that, that allows you to get the asset, but then the other party dominates the assets, time, and we don't actually end up getting the service that we need to these departments, so.
I think that's a, I always start these processes with no assumption as to whether shared services is a better model or not, because in my experience, half the time it is and half the time it isn't. So, I, I think that's, I completely support that point, Chris. You start with the commitment to analysis, and then you make decisions from there, so, yeah.
Really quickly, that's, that's an excellent point, Chris. You know, a couple of the components that have, in my experience, have been critical to successful shared services models, is you have to have folks on the team who are incredibly collaborative in nature, and also keeping lines of communication very open, and having regular contact with one another. So, the fact for us that our, our central office is here in this building would be, again, just incredibly valuable to keeping those good lines of communication open. But again, just from my experience, those are sort of a few of the key elements to keep the model successful, to ensure that no one entity is sort of dominating the other. Just, again, sharing from my past experience, we were doing shared services with six different entities, so it is always a little bit of a balancing act, but it's all of those entities being part of a team and sort of playing well together to make sure that everybody is getting what they need, and that no one group is sort of dominating the other, but that's an excellent point.
Yeah, and just for the record, you know, to my BOE friends, I'm not demonizing the BOE, don't come after me. Yeah, exactly, I know. You're gonna instigate it too, I bet you, Sarah.
Well, I have one more other question to, does the, a shared service of, of this type of position impact our audit review? I mean, is there any risk associated with opening up this service to essentially a whole nother entity having access? So, it would be a neutral as far as, as far as audit, I'm concerned?
Right.
It would actually, it could potentially be an improvement, though, right? Because, I mean, we have a substantial deficiency at this point. So, even a one percent increase is, is an increase towards...
I was just thinking about all the other, the access model for...
Yeah, I agree, I'd, I'd always prefer to do it ourselves, but as we've, as we've struggled up here for a long time, sometimes the only way to do it is, is shared service too, so. Yep, gotta look at both ways.
And there's gonna be a, oh, go ahead, sorry. There's gonna be a theme in this meeting of, of me talking about shared services, but it's not about saying that that's the right solution, it's about studying and having that analysis, because I know we've been talking about it long before I was at this table, and, and maybe an outcome of it is we can stop talking about it because it doesn't make sense. I'm totally open to that possibility.
That would be a nice change.
Exactly, yeah. I was just gonna add, in addition to quality of relationship and an integrated model, you know, good service metrics and agreements, you know, that you can manage and hold people accountable to is also part of it, so.
Yeah, if I could just quickly add, to that point, yes, I mean, I think that would be important, that we would absolutely need to have a shared services agreement in place, so expectations are clear. And just on, on the communication point, one of the things, again, that I've also found helpful with the shared financial services was during difficult budget times, particularly when we saw massive decreases in state revenue, is that we were in it together, and we looked at dealing with those decreases on a proportional share of our respective budgets, because, of course, the education budget is much larger, but it was great to have a shared finance department and be able to work through those issues together, and come up with solutions together as, as a town, as opposed to, you know, these factions fighting for the dollars. And that, I thought was another, another positive of the model.
Well, I would, I would agree, I think that, I really like the word shared services versus this forced regionalism that we keep hearing about, and it has to work. And at the end of the day, if we have some redundancies built in where everybody is less worried about somebody being out on vacation or something else, if they can share that, and everybody understands what's expected, I think that's the way to go.
Awesome conversation. Great. Let's move on to the town manager's office.
Okay, so the town manager's office, touching on our budget services and programs, so as you know, our office is responsible for implementing policies, initiatives, ordinance development, implementing ordinances. Again, something we've been working on is also implementing your goals that you established for your two-year term. We are also responsible for administering the human resources program. This also includes labor relations, and, and I did wanna point this out because we are also taking care of the collective bargaining. We, rather than hiring labor counsel to do our labor negotiation soup to nuts, we are actually doing the bulk of that work ourselves. We do use labor counsel to peer review the proposals that we've put together, and for counsel when needed, but we are doing a bulk of that work on our own. The human resources program, it's comprehensive, it's recruitment, it's employee development, it's benefits, it's administration of our pension, the day-to-day aspects of that. So, again, it's, it's a pretty comprehensive program that we're responsible for. We're also responsible for risk management for the organization, that's including our workers' comp and general liability, working with those particular insurance items and issues related to both. We are also responsible for budget development and economic development support. There are, of course, other, other duties, but those are some of the key duties that we're responsible for. For the general government budget, there was a slight decrease. The general government budget is sort of a centralized location for some of our organization-wide expenditures, so examples include our tuition reimbursement program that we have for our employees, with the exceptional police officers that's still included in their budget, our copying and printing expenses for this particular building, our telephone costs, our postage, and organization-wide training and development. Those are some of the types of town-wide expenses that we have in the general government And for the Board of Selectmen slash Community Services budget, this includes things generally related to your work, includes the first select person stipend, funding for your board, your commission clerk, funding for legal notices, such as, again, for ordinance development, and various dues, so CCM, our obligation to CROG, which is our regional planning agency, things of that nature, that is included within this budget. This particular budget also is where we show our public agency support, with the exception of the public agencies that are more community services in nature, those are still reflected in the community services budget. Something we do have flagged for discussion at the end of the day, we did receive some requests from our outside agencies for increases in our grant contributions to those organizations. Two factors, one is that the budget was so tight, I level-funded all the agencies that were supported in the current year to maintain their, their current level of contribution, but really felt that, you know, considering new requests or additional requests for these outside agencies, was less internally organization-focused and more sort of a policy conversation for you all, so we have a nice slide on that for later this afternoon, so you can hopefully dig into that issue a bit. Regarding our health district, since Melissa serves on the Board of Directors and serves on their finance committee, I will let her take the slide.
So, I believe you received a communication a few, of course, elected meetings ago regarding the proposed budget for the Department of Health District. This is a twelve-point-five percent increase over the current year. The per capita assessment has gone up ten percent. There are a couple of reasons for that, primarily, the health district has undergoed a strategic, five-year strategic plan that they recently adopted, and this is intended to really start to address more formally the state mandates that health districts are required to fulfill as our local health district. So, that strategic plan does include hiring a part-time epidemiologist in the coming year. We are looking to share that position, again, back to shared services with another town, hopefully. The five-year plan does include also another hire down the line at some point, if it gets in there, two or three. So, again, the budget does provide funding to meet those objectives that are laid out in the five-year plan, to improve their community health efforts. The district is pursuing accreditation. This is really, although there's a cost associated with it, this really does provide sort of a format and a structure for achieving the statutoryally required mandates per the state legislation of what's required about health districts. So, this is really gonna provide a format to make sure that we're meeting those goals. Because our population increased, are increased a little, a little bit higher than ten percent per capita cost.
So, talk to me, so the position they're adding?
Yes.
For the folks at home that might not know what that position is, including me.
Epidemiology, I believe, is the study of not just patient to patient, but the patient being the entire community, so this person will study sort of population-wide diseases and health issues facing the entire population. So, for us, that would be our ten towns in the district.
Do we have smallpox coming back, or, I mean, what, what are they gonna study? I mean, we have more people than we know what to do with at the CDC and otherwise on the flu. What other epidemic diseases are there that affect the ten region community?
That warrants a twelve percent increase, which is far beyond anything else that we're doing anywhere in town government.
I mean, the, the twelve-point-five percent increases, I mean, this, the epidemiologists is part-time, I believe it's a thirty thousand dollar item in this budget, so that's only a part of it, there's also the funding here for accreditation as well, so it's, that twelve-point-five is reflected on a number of items related to the strategic plan.
And accreditation. How's that benefit, Simsberry?
Yeah.
The accreditation. I'm just trying to figure out what that actually does for the town.
Yeah, it, again, it provides a framework, the twelve items, I believe, and the accreditation that we have to demonstrate competency in, the first ten are actually the ten statutoryally required mandates for health districts by the state committee.
Was this in the category of unfunded mandate?
Yeah, in part, can I, can I jump in?
So, I'm still not quite clear on what it is they do, and maybe a...
Yeah, I mean, and to tag on that, I mean, they slammed us with a pretty substantial budget increase, what, two years ago as well? So, this is on top of, I mean, we're up substantially without the district area.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna settle today, so.
What'd you say, no?
No, no, what I'm saying, I think, without proper information, Jason, I know, I know you're opposed to that, and can we just park this and get back?
Okay.
And this is a to-do, just to get deeper, a deeper understanding of it, I mean, they're gonna come back with a fantastic justification, obviously, it's just gonna be, we, we agree with it, right? So.
Okay, so we'll level fund them then. So, until they get in here... Okay, so we'll level fund them then. So, until they get in here and explain to us why they want 12 and 1/2, my answer is no.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't necessarily concur with that. I mean, if you're gonna say no, then you have to, I wouldn't know why we're saying no.
Yeah, to justify the, what I'm saying, yes.
But on the flip side, we don't know why we're saying yes either.
Yeah, I don't think we can sit here and ask Melissa questions. She doesn't have the information on it.
Yeah. So, we need.
I mean, they slammed us with increases and we've just taken them. And again, that's great that they want accreditation, but what does that do for us?
I understand.
Yeah, can I jump in just a bit here? So, in addition, though, to the per cap, I'm sorry, in addition to the increase because of the new position and assessment, we also have been seeing an increase in our population. So it's a per capita formula for our assessment for being part of the health district. So that was also part of the factor with our increase. It wasn't simply just because of some of these organizational changes that they're making, it was also because our population increased. So we sort of got a, a double hit, if you will, in terms of our increase. Our assessment as part of the regional health district, they have a budgeting process, public hearing, et cetera. I, I can go back and look at the contract, but I believe that once the assessment is made, I, I don't think we have the ability to say yay or no to the assessment, meaning we would essentially have to try to go per care services through another health district or try to go it alone. I will, I will say this, I, I do strongly believe that our regional health districts are actually a really good story to tell of successful regionalism in Connecticut. And what we typically see is that the regional health districts, as opposed to the standalone health districts, that our per cap costs do tend to be considerably lower. So I thought it was a helpful stat that Melissa had included for you all, is, and I understand that this is a big increase, but when you look at our increase going to about $6.05 per cap compared to current average, which is about 8.36. So we are still considerably lower than that. So, again, while I know this is a large increase, it is still less than what I would expect we would be paying if we were still operating an independent municipal health department. And then also, just for some background information that might be helpful, I, and I can pull up the date for you specifically. I think it may have been either your December packet or your first packet in January. We had included some information about the health district's recent, recent strategic planning initiative. And also, they touched on particularly the bullet point that talks about those new-ish 10 statutory required mandates that they now have. So that was part of their strategic planning processes. They found that they weren't meeting a number of what are essentially unfunded mandates from the state. So if you do go back to your packet, there is a nice overview of some of those issues that I think some of you are speaking to. And then if you have additional questions, we would be happy to get answers or ask Jennifer Cortanas, who's the executive director, to come in and speak to you more directly about this issue.
Thank you.
I still don't like it. I mean, it's irresponsible, 12%. It doesn't exist anywhere else in the world. That's ridiculous. So.
Well, I think it's one thing to question, but I'm gonna respond to the tone. I don't think we can criticize them because we aren't up to speed with the details of their proposal. I'm gonna assume that, you know, this is a thoughtful, well-thought-through proposal. So, I mean, can't get mad at them because we can't defend their position, so.
So we're just gonna take a 12% and charge taxpayers for it and we don't care?
Well, if people on this, I would be voting for it, but if people on this board feel strongly, then we obviously need very quickly to do our homework, bring them in here, have a more extensive discussion, or ask questions, that's all. I'm just reacting to us blaming them because, you know, we're not prepared to vote for their proposal, because, you know, we haven't really researched it in detail.
I'm not blaming anybody, Chris. I'm just questioning a 12 and 1/2% increase in this day and age. And, and epidemiologists for what?
Yeah, I, I agree with, I agree with Sean to a certain extent, that it's one thing if we, if we're asked by a constituent, why can't, why do we have a say or not a say in the allocation? That's one thing. But if you, if you also further can't say, well, I can't control the allocation, I also, I actually don't know what it's for, that's a whole nother uncomfortable conversation. So that's really what I'm asking for.
If you go back and look at the historical trend, I believe this budget is up substantially over a five-year period. And again, it's, you know, where does it end? Because that's, I know it's not Melissa's fault, but, you know.
With the five-year plan, I mean, you will be seeing increases.
On top of the increases we've already paid.
At the end of the five years, I will say, we will still be below that 8.36 in current day dollars. In five years, we would still be below that.
What is the 8.36?
That's the average.
Of what? Of other health districts around the state?
Comparatively. And we do have a document from the health district that we can share, or full five-year, a giant document, but it lays out their five-year plan, which we can certainly share with you.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. So some areas of focus for us in the upcoming fiscal year. We will be negotiating with all three of our CSA unions, our Dispatchers Union, and our Parks and Public Works Union, which is represented by ASME. So we will be negotiating for five successor collective bargaining agreements. That will start sort of late winter into the spring. But given the volume of contracts and some of the changes I'll be seeking, I do anticipate that this will continue through, through into fiscal 1920. And we're going to be working on continuing to coordinate and support the work of the newly established Economic Development Commission. That group has begun meeting. We've been helping them with essentially an orientation and bringing in a series of guest speakers. And they have also established work teams to work on the four major areas of focus that you've tasked them with. And they've been meeting and, and working on that. And we look forward to reporting back to you on, on their work. We're going to continue to conduct visitations and outreach with the business community. That's something I have been doing with Mike from the Planning Department. Again, this issue of working with finance to implement a comprehensive financial management system, particularly the electronic payroll and human resources system piece, if we are able to obtain the funding for this project, this is just something I believe that is such a critical need in our organization. This would be a priority for me, working with the Finance Department to make sure that this project moves forward. Another initiative I've been involved in, and I've assigned Tom Tiversky as the staff lead, is our Parks and Open Space Master Plan, that we are about to execute a contract with a selected vendor. So we'll be working on that throughout the spring and the upcoming year. And then once we have the results of that, we'll begin to work on implementation. We're also going to be working with the Open Space Committee on developing and refining our open space acquisition criteria, but also land management guidelines. We currently do not have land management guidelines, and we're not addressing things such as how do we manage our conservation easements, how do we want to manage our ag lands. So really trying to look at the issue much more comprehensively, and we'll be working with a work group of the Open Space Committee on, on that matter. We're also working to complete our analysis of the key financial issues related to the Simsbury Farms Special Revenue Fund. And then we will be, again, working with a work group on that to implement any endorsed recommendations that come out of that. And lastly, we're going to continue to respond and monitor the Deepwater Wind Solar Project. For budget highlights, again, for transparency purposes, we moved our recruitment software to the computer software account. That is not a new expense. That software we've had for, for some time, but again, felt that it was more appropriately reflected in the computer software account. We took some funds, there were some savings within the general government budget, we write-sized some accounts that we felt were slightly over budget, and reallocated some funds within that budget for organization-wide leadership training and professional development. We did have our first annual leadership retreat this year. I was really happy with the results. I'd also like to do some small group work with a few of our departments. Mike from Planning and I in particular have a project we'd really like to do in terms of small group work with his department. And so, again, reallocating some savings from that budget to this particular line item, so we could do some of that smaller group work. For public agency support, there does, within the Board of Selectmen budget, appear to be a large increase. Again, this is one of those situations where there is actually no net impact to the budget. We make, on the Housing Authority's behalf, their sewer use payments. On average, we're looking at that being around about $11,500. And we were not reflecting that in the budget. We do receive an offsetting revenue from the Housing Authority, but again, in an effort to be more transparent, we wanted to make sure that we are properly budgeting and accounting for that expense that we're making, as well as the offsetting revenue that's coming into the, into the town.
And I just say that the Housing Authority is very grateful for the transparency afforded by those numbers. The Housing Authority does make a pilot payment, which covers the entire amount of those services which are provided. But for years, they've been trying to get a breakdown of those numbers, and very much appreciate both your and Maria's response.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Cheryl. And, um, yeah, just to quickly point out, we do, we do provide two other services to them. One is we do provide their parking lot maintenance. That includes snow removal. That's provided by the Parks Division under Tom Tiversky. We've done, again, Tom and Orlando, I really want to commend them for this as well. We shared with them a model that I've used in the past, and they did a very thorough analysis of, you know, average number of storms, labor costs, benefits costs, materials costs. And in an average storm year, that service is just under $21,000 a year that we do provide to them. But again, there is an offsetting revenue. The other piece that we do provide is IT services, and that's, you know, with benefits, you know, closer to around $1,000 a year. So trends and challenges for the upcoming fiscal year. Once we are successfully done negotiating our contracts with those five unions, we will then have to move forward with implementation of the contractual changes. So that will take some time. Again, we're going to have a continued focus on financial management, particularly around improvements, process improvements, accountability and monitoring, and various reporting. We're continuing, I think, to build and grow on that. You know, I think a good example is our budget status reports, where we implemented those now two quarters ago. We started with the general fund, then we built on, and we're now including the capital projects and capital fund reporting. And now we're working on being able to share with you special revenue fund accounting, as well as the health insurance fund, moving forward as part of that quarterly reporting that both you and the Board of Finance will be receiving. And of course, we're going to continue to monitor state policy and budgetary impacts on Simsbury as, as things continue to evolve at the state level. For CNR projects, we, we put this under our budget, but we did place a small amount of money into the existing CNR project for Deepwater Wind. We will have some ongoing expenses related to plan review and inspections and things of that nature. So we've included a small amount of money there for that project.
Thank you. Just so, I'm, I'm following along. Have we covered boards and commissions?
Oh, um, you know, there's, thank you. There is just one thing I will quickly point out under boards and commissions.
Probate.
Oh, probate, no significant changes there, unless folks have a specific question for us.
Are they falling under boards and commissions, or are they separate?
Uh, I don't think we flagged covering them specifically. It's such a small budget, but we can certainly cover probate. We can cover probate with boards and commissions if folks would like.
Yeah, because it's a 75% increase.
Okay.
So, I want to know what tax going on with probate court.
Okay. So let me quickly just jump into boards and commissions. So for boards and commissions, just to consolidate, the historic district commission is one of our land use bodies that Mike's department is responsible for. And he had all these little, little budgets. And so we basically condensed all of the land use boards and commissions into one program budget, just so we can more easily track, you know, those, those expenses. So that was really, I think, our only significant, significant change for boards and commissions.
And the public agency support under the EDC is?
Main Street.
That's Main Street, and that's not part of our public agency support on the, on the Board of Selectmen budget.
Correct, right. But what we have done.
That's where we've had it in the past.
Yeah. And for the end of, the end of the day, when we kind of go over those discussion items and public agency support, we did include Main Street as part of that comprehensive list, just so you can look at everything in a nice, you know, nice clean, clean snapshot.
I know, that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Clinton?
Oh, probate.
Probate, $5,000, now probate. Yeah, I guess, I mean, we spent, we budgeted $5,426. I know it's only a couple grand, but they want $9,500 out of us this year.
So, I wish I had this graph on the power plate, but I'll try to explain it. So, we have in fiscal year 19, a budget of $5,426. And this was only just the general fund portion. So there's another fund that incorporates other expenditures related to probate. And in this year, we put Simsbury's entire portion into the general fund. So actually, from fiscal year 18 to 19, 19, if you were comparing to 18, is only $4,666, and is actually a decrease of $760.
Thank you. Now we can.
Okay.
Just, I see 75% on the page, and it jumps out of me.
Yeah, thank you.
So just in terms of time, I'm going to, I'm sorry, Mike, I'm going to aim to take a break, somewhere between 10:00 and 10:15, depending on where, where we land. So, please go ahead, Mike.
I'll just find a, your timetable.
Oh, no, no, whatever you mean.
So, planning and community developments, both the planning and community development and building department budget, actually, it combined the two departments, it's actually a decrease, just a little under 0.06%. You'll notice that, though, breaking the two divisions apart, planning and community development is actually a 3.5% increase. However, historically, community development and planning were two separate line items. And for transparency purposes, Maria and I felt that really, it should be all of one department. So that 3.5% increase what you see really comes from combining those two line items in the past.
Just jumping quickly there, Mike. And, and this, again, just for transparency purposes, I felt it was very confusing that we had a separate program called community development. And part of our professional planning staff was lumped into that very small separate program budget. I mean, typically, in our world, when you're referring to having a community development department, it's usually something that's in a much larger city. Usually when you have what's called an entitlement community for the federal government for the purposes of the CDBG program, as well as the home program. And so typically, in those larger cities, they're automatically receiving these funds from HUD, and then they're doing initiatives related to implementation, again, of the CDBG or home program. We are not an entitlement community. We do not administer those types of programs. So again, we just rolled that smaller professional staff member salary into the planning department. So now, all of our professional staff members within the planning division are, are reflected in one place.
I appreciate all these changes in transparency, although it makes it hard to tell the story this year.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, in, in our budget, we have 7.5 positions. I just want to note, one of those full-time positions is the deputy building official, which is a shared position with the town of Bloomfield, which, that model has been working, both communities, it's been terrific. Dwight spends his time, 60% of the time spent with the town of Simsbury, 40% of the time with the town of Bloomfield. And through this collaborative effort, I mean, it's been great. Example being, this past summer, while Henry's on vacation, we were able to have the deputy building official here full-time, instead of asking the surrounding communities, could your building official cover inspections for the week while Henry is out? So that, we, we have a shared service model, and it's working. And, so hopefully, it keeps moving forward. So just going over, just briefly, on our services and programs for the planning department, obviously, we provide, one thing is code enforcement related to the various either land use regulations, ordinance, et cetera. We also provide staffing, supportive staffing for all of the land use commissions, both regulatory and advisory. I won't go through the, all the list, but you could see, we, we have a lot of boards that we provide service for, professional staffing. As for the building department, obviously, their, in their primary function is interpreting and enforcing the state building code. They also deal with the town's underground tank ordinance. That's for underground fuel storage tanks within aquifer areas in town. They also have to, if there's any kind of public safety issues related to buildings, et cetera, the building department will deal with that. Just to get back, planning would deal more on the blight issues. That's where one of the ordinances we have. So for ordinances on planning, we're blight, drought ordinance, stormwater, littering, junk, junk vehicles. And we have a lot of different regs that we, ordinances, regulations that we're dealing with. Because of that, the primary staff in both departments, we have a lot of certifications and licenses that we have and that we maintain. You'll notice that there's a line item that's probably larger than others on our requirements for continuing education. I won't get into too much detail on that, but it just goes with how many things or hats that we wear. So, some of our areas of focus, staff actually has been working on a comprehensive rewrite of the zoning regulations. We actually, we're, we're hoping to have a, the draft out to the commission late this spring. This is something that we've tried saving money and working on internally. It's been kind of consuming, considering we've been, for the, the better part of the summer, down one full-time staff member due to staffing changes. However, we will say that we will be filling that role soon. We have been interviewing for the code compliance officer. The other project, which has kind of taken a shelf while we, while we were shorthanded, however, it will be coming to the forefront, is developing a development guide that gives a user-friendly format of, you know, how do you go about the permitting process? That way, so that residents and business owners will know, like, what, what kind of permits do I need to open my business? Do I need what kind of permits do I need to open my business? Do I need a permit to replace my roof on my house if it's a homeowner? Can I put signs in front of my business? If so, how often, how many, where? So that I'm hoping to start working on this summer. And this is something for this fiscal year. We want to have this completed. The other is just the long-term plan of conservation and development. It is just some of the objectives and goals that are in the P O C D. That's the comprehensive 10-year plan. We're looking to, to move forward, such as the economic development priorities. One thing that ties back to the first thing I said was looking at our land use processes, seeing is there stuff, there's, do we have processes that, you know, pose obstacles? Are we sending people in circles? And we like to avoid those situations. The other is, the last one is exploring new building permit software. So next year in 2020, the current permit software that the building department uses, View Permit, the contract will expire with CROG. We have already started looking for new software because CROG has two other vendors that they're, they're, they're using now. And staff has gone out to other communities that are using these software, has sat with their staff, seen how the software works. We have put it in the C and R plan for year two to switch over to a new vendor for the building permit software. It's not something that this fiscal year that we, we're asking, but it will be coming up. But it's, it's an area of focus that we just want to make sure we are comfortable with the direction we're going for that software. Cause it's, that software is, is a big, we want something that at both from a staff level and from a applicant level is easy to work with, people will, easy to access and for, payments are easy to process. Cause that's, you know, we don't want to go down the road of something that's, that both sides are not getting what we paid for. So I said earlier, planning and community development is one of the highlights, that those two line items have been, have been combined. And like I said, as we said earlier, we just had too many little, I had the department of too many little budgets, yet provided the service for every, everything. You have a $2,983 increase for full-time salaries. And as I said earlier about the, it's the shared time account, though, sorry, this is the part-time clerk position. So we hired a part-time clerk this past year, which she works 19 hours a week. She's an admin staff that splits her time both between building and plan, the planning department, really as, as admin staff. It's, it has helped with some of the workload and I can go, we can talk about that later when we start talking about development. As I said earlier, really focusing on looking at our current applications and processes to make sure that it's less onerousome, it's less confusing for homeowners. The other thing, project that's going on right now is FEMA is updating the flood insurance rate maps. And I've been the primary staff that's been attending meetings, has been in communication with FEMA. This is something that in this fiscal year, the draft maps will come out and you'll hear a lot about it. And we, our department will then serve as one, the primary contact for the town and FEMA, but more importantly, fielding all of the questions on was it mean? And to say whether it's going to be people are mapped into a flood plane or mapped out, I can't speak to that yet till I start seeing some data. But there, it's a re-study. They've actually had, Green Associates is the contractor, which has been in Sims Berry out doing survey work and engineering. So the, the maps will change. So we're going to hear a lot about it and very likely know if there are complaints, this board may hear people complaining about the maps. Remember it's a FEMA project, it's not the town of Sims Berry. But unfortunately, we care the, the burden on enforcing the FEMA regs and maps. So I wanted to just go over kind of where we stand with some of the projects right now. And really, I'll just start off with just talking about the building department because last year alone, the building department fought, processed, tracked and filed 2003, 2033 applications for permits for construction valued of $71,584,777. Also that, that department performed 2,131 inspections for all, for some of those permits. So we're, from a construction standpoint, we're busy. And just to talk about a few of those, you know, for public projects, you have the Henry James addition, which will be starting. You have renovations currently over at the, the Sims Ray Library, Westminster renovations, St. Mary's addition, which is kind of winding down, will wind down in this fiscal year. As for commercial projects, we put Deepwater Wind, the, should they get their approval from the states as a project that'll come, that may affect this fiscal year. From a permit and inspection perspective, it will, my department will be dealing with a lot of inspections out there for that, especially the building, building department with all the electrical connections. Curaleaf and their relocation, I think everyone knows Curaleaf has moved from Grist Mill to 34 Hot Meadow Street, the former CLMP facility. They've retrofit all 68,000 square feet of that building for the relocation. They've actually had told us that when they move in, they're already talking about an expansion. So, because their productivity has increased 40%. That is something that will come online in the next fiscal year. They, they were supposed to be in the facility February 1st. A little, a few glitches occurred. So now they're kind of delayed their move from Grist Mill to Hot Meadow Street. As for residential development, actually the first one really is a mixed-use development. You have the ridge at Talcott Mountain, 282 residential units, 110, 110 bed assisted facility, assisted living facility and 11,000 square feet of commercial space. So 124 of the 282 residential units have been permitted as of today. The assisted living facility has been entirely permitted. The assisted living facility will be requesting certificate of occupancies later this summer, probably in August. So this would be something new coming to the grand list for this fiscal year. As for the residential units, probably that we've been told upwards of 80 will be requesting certificate of occupancies by July. But we still have, like I said, 124 units that are permitted along with the rest of the development, the balance of the development coming. Highcroft Place, which is off Powder Forest Drive, it's a, it's an apartment development, 272 residential units, 224 of them are apartments which have been constructed. They're just wrapping up on the final buildings out there. The 48 townhouse unit development, which is if you're driving up Powder Forest, you see the apartment complex. It is to the, to the northwest. It's the cleared area. As of next week, they will, where they're coming in for a pre-construction meeting. So this was part, a portion of the project that, that when it was approved, we thought, you know, five, it'd be five, 10 years down the road before they construct this. So this is something that will start construction this, this fiscal year and may, this current where we, we are in and may linger in to the next one. Cambridge Crossing is another single-family residential development off of Hoskins Road. Six homes are under construction right now. He'll probably be pursuing more homes as we speak. Lastly, some potential development. There is a parcel, it's along the Canton Town Line off of Route 44, that went to the zoning commission for redevelopment, rezoning. It was zoned residential, it's now zoned business. This is just, if you're looking at Best Buy, kind of the top of the ridge behind it, it's 18 acres that are in Sims Berry. We have had people in the office already looking at commercial development there. So that is, that is something that's coming.
From the current owner or from somebody who's prospectively looking at that property from the-
From the current owner. He, she is working with a developer on courting commercial development as we speak. That is something that very likely is on the horizon. The other one, which is kind of interesting developments is the Big Y parcel. One of the buildings has been demolished out there. The real estate agent for Big Y, actually their, their contract was terminated. Big Y is reassessing that parcel. We could have that project coming back to the commission. So like for, for construction wise, we're still very busy in, in the planning and building departments.
Mike, I'm just going to jump in very quickly on this particular slide. One of the reasons I want to, Mike, just to give an update on some of these projects and, and there could be others as well that are coming, is that as we get further on in the day and we start to get to some of those policy discussions later in the day around health insurance, debt, capital, things of that nature, I think that the new growth we're going to see in some of these future years could help alleviate some of those challenges that we have. You know, the way that the grand list works, there's always a little bit of lag time. So whatever is in the ground for October 1 of this year will not actually affect the revenue side of our budget until, let's see, that would be 2021. So I think 2021 and fiscal 2122, we may, based on current projects that are in the pipeline, really see some good years of new growth that again, could take some pressure off of our existing, you know, residential tax base, take some pressure off of the mill rate and potentially reallocate some of those funds from new growth to some of those other expenditure challenges we have. So I think this is setting up nicely in part our discussion for later today.
So I agree with you. My only, my only caveat to that is it's potentially at two people, a unit, another 1,300 residents in town, which costs more money on the services side. More police officers, social workers, public works, you know, et cetera. So we do need to, well, it does help the grand list. We can't, we can't lose sight of the fact that we do have to increase the operating budget for those people sometimes too.
Yeah, fair point, fair point.
And the school side.
Great. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Actually, are there other questions for Mike? Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Well done, Mike. I think that's a good time for a stretch. Let's come back at 25 after the hour, so about 12 minutes.
How are we? Okay, welcome back, everybody.
Almost everybody.
Almost everybody.
Here comes Sean.
I'll turn things over to Kristin for social services.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for having me here today to talk to you about our social services budget proposed for the fiscal year 1920. On my first slide, you'll see our general overview, our total proposed operating budget for community and social services department is $617,466. That's an increase of $58,145 or 10.4%. And then you see the increased breakouts below. In further slides, I'm going to explain those increases to you so that you'll see that those aren't really truly cost increases necessarily. A lot of those are related to further efforts of the budget transparency and putting things in line with where they make the most sense. We currently have 5.71 budgeted FTEs. We have had a very good experience in onboarding our new full-time FTE this fiscal year. She's been with us just about three months now, and I can share with you later some highlights of what we've already accomplished. Our overview for social services and senior services. In our programs related to youth development, we do have a very robust juvenile review board. This last year, we had seen 18 cases in our juvenile review board, and in fiscal year for 18, we had jumped up to 21 cases. So that is a very active review board, providing opportunities to our youth to remain out of the formal juvenile justice system. Our youth service bureau is also very active, and we're looking to make some improvements in that service area, and that's something that our new social worker is going to be working on. Our theme for this year, in conjunction with the Simsbury High School, is to make the right choice, and we're promoting that not only in the school system but throughout the school district with products and programs. We offer our family therapy program, which is a very good effort to help connect our youth that are experiencing some early potential mental health concerns. And I say it as potential because oftentimes, you know, with our youth, we don't want to diagnose them yet, but we are seeing some concerns. And in that program, we refer to local contracted therapists to see our youth, and last year, we were able to connect 17 of our students to local therapists for counseling and their families as well. Positive youth development programs. We partner very closely with the Simsbury Public Library and with Community for Care and our Board of Ed to provide programming to our youth in several topic areas that promote positive youth development. In our senior service programming, we have a very robust senior center. We are very lucky and grateful for all the programs that we are able to provide to our seniors in town. Highlights include, I wanted to share with you, our congregant meals. This is our first fiscal year that we've introduced our second formal lunch program. This year, we've added our Tuesday lunch program. It's a cafe-style lunch, serving a soup and sandwich, and anyone is welcome to attend that. It's $2 for soup, $2 for sandwich. It's been successful in my eyes. It's been slow to get to traction. It doesn't have the same numbers as we have on Wednesday, but I think it's still a viable and good program. I can share with you that in the first seven weeks, we served 200 meals. We had 200 duplicated participants and an average of 29 per week. In comparison to our Wednesday lunch, which is our more robust traditional program, in that same seven weeks, we had 349 participants and an average of 50 people per week.
To what extent are those the same folks who participate?
I'm sorry?
To what extent are the folks who participate in the lunch the same people who do the Wednesdays?
Sure, without having taken a formal attendance, but anecdotally, it is a large pocket of people that tend to attend the lunch programs and are duplicated. What we do see differently is there's a lot more staff participation with the Tuesday lunch. We have a lot of folks even from town hall here that are buying the Tuesday lunch, but there is a lot of crossover between the Tuesday and Wednesday. We also, one of our biggest programs is our wellness and exercise programs. We contract with multiple providers to provide fitness programs of different likes and degrees from yoga, tai chi, line dancing, country line dancing. We have something for everyone, and that's very popular. Last year, we had 1,719 participants in our exercise programs. We also, of course, offer our transportation, dial-a-ride, which actually is a service that is monitored and administered by social services. And we have our state statute municipal agent for the elderly. Social services programs, we are, of course, very busy, as always, serving our community. I have statistics for you. I'm not going to give them to you all on these programs, but if you have specific questions, I'm prepared to answer them for you. These are our highlights of what we provide. Most of them are financial-based, energy assistance renters rebate, financial assistance, all helping to put funding back into the pockets of people that are struggling the most financially in our community. We have several supplemental food programs that help to provide food to people that are in need in our community. We're very grateful to our local participants and businesses that donate and also sell to us at low-cost food for those programs. One of the exciting things that we're doing this year is we're renewing all of our applications for our largest food program, our Cheese Day program. That's something that people should be recertifying every year, and this year, we're rolling that out and recapturing new data. And to share with you something new that we're adding on, which we've been able to accomplish through our new social worker, is we are focusing on delivery of Cheese Day to our homebound individuals. And that's not just seniors, that's for our disabled individuals, too. And already, we have seven folks enrolled in the home delivery program. We've also been able to expand our volunteer base and programs available to our volunteers.
Just curious, how do you then, who does a delivery and what vehicle does it use?
Sure, and that's a good question. The initial month, our community social worker did the delivery, and part of that was also for her to be able to connect back with the people and assess how it's going. We're going to be working on having our volunteers do the delivery, and then that would be in their car. We are working on expanding our friendly visitor program. That has not yet, the details have been discussed with our town manager as far as, you know, liability vehicles, how those things would work, but that's something.
And that's a program that's collaborative with the community at large, correct?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. We've had some faith-based organizations that have also approached us and asked us what we need most, and we're looking forward to expanding those programs and involving them. So we also have some services that are mandated by our state statutes, which is processing and handling all evictions and ejectments in the town. We had one that was very significant just a few months ago, and I was extremely grateful to have the assistance of our additional social worker because it was something that took two people and almost two months to resolve. So that's also a highlight from having a new staff person.
Yeah, I'm just going to quickly jump in on the point about evictions and relocations. So those are technically two separate statutes, but oftentimes, they do have sort of overlapping duties and responsibilities. One of the things that's really challenging about both evictions and relocations is that, as Krista mentioned, we can sometimes get these very complex cases, and unfortunately, we, the town, end up having to foot the bill for the eviction or, in some cases, relocation. And under the relocation statute, we need to provide up to $4,000, I believe, $4,000 per instance of relocation that we're required to do by statute. So those are really difficult things to budget for, but they can be rather substantial. You know, for example, with the complex case we had with the eviction, we almost had to hire a specialized company because it was a very complex hoarding case, and that, when we were getting quotes, was in excess of $5,000. So these can add up. They don't happen often. It's not something that typically happens every day or every week, but when they do pop up, not only do they require a tremendous amount of staff time and energy, but they do tend to have a real financial impact against our budget.
Thank you. Some areas of focus. On my top of the list, which is very important to me and I feel will benefit the town and our ability to help serve our residents, will be the completion of the requirements for my LCSW license and my ability and preparation to sit for the boards. The boards are very extensive. It's a four-hour test, and I'm looking forward to hopefully taking that test this fall. I, many years prior, had met the working hours required to meet this license, and now I've been afforded through you the opportunity to meet the clinical hours related to this license, and I'm on track to complete 60 of those 100 hours by the end of this fiscal year. So again, my hope is to be able to take that test and report back to you before the end of the calendar year. And again, highlighting expansion of existing programs and services. Another really exciting new program that I think you knew about, we added in a sensory-friendly Santa and holiday program for our children that have special needs, and that was super exciting and popular to the extent that we are now planning a sensory-friendly Easter bunny, and we will be looking forward to other holiday events in relation to other faiths as well, and all are welcome to that. We're looking forward this year to completing a dial-a-ride RFQ process. That has not been done in a little while. We are happy with our current contracted vendor, but as, you know, through the process, as I said, has not been done in a while, so we are going to do that and select a vendor from that process. So that's a highlight for next year. Just dipping into what were the drivers in the cost increase for our overall budget. $39,177 or 15% increase in administration, and the bulk of that was related to the fact that we moved the salary and costs associated with our elderly outreach worker up into the administration line. Previously, had been budgeted separately, and we found that it just made sense to have her in our part-time administration line.
Really, what we are trying to do here is to capture all of our direct service staff in, again, one consolidated place for transparency purposes. It was very odd. We had this very small, sort of separate account where the part-time outreach worker was, and again, we did this to consolidate all of our direct service staff in one place.
And then we have, you know, our increase in salaries due to related contractual increases, and we also have, you'll see what looks like an increase in our public agency support. As Maria had previously mentioned, it is level funding at this point for our public agency support, but part of what was provided was in special revenue accounts, so now they're all being reflected in totality in my budget, but there's no impact to the net expenditure.
The only actual increase in there is the contractually negotiated hours, right?
Correct, contractually negotiated hours, and then we also had some small increases in other line items, for example, to continue my license and some increases to be able to support the education of our additional social worker. We also, similarly to the explanation that I just gave to you, there is an increase reflected in relation to dial-a-ride transportation. The true increase to that right now
Highlights include, I wanted to share with you, our congregant meals. This is our first fiscal year that we've introduced our second formal lunch program. This year, we've added our Tuesday lunch program. It's a cafe-style lunch, serving a soup and sandwich. And anyone is welcome to attend that. It's $2 for soup, $2 for sandwich. It's been successful in my eyes. It's been slow to get to traction. It doesn't have the same numbers as we have on Wednesday, but I think it's still a viable and good program. I can share with you that in the first seven weeks, we served 200 meals. We had 200 duplicated participants and an average of 29 per week. In comparison to our Wednesday lunch, which is our more robust traditional program, in that same seven weeks, we had 349 participants and an average of 50 people per week.
To what extent are those the same folks who participate?
I'm sorry?
To what extent are the folks who participate in the lunch the same people who do the Wednesdays?
Sure, without having taken a formal attendance, but anecdotally, it is a large pocket of people that tend to attend the lunch programs and are duplicated. What we do see differently is there's a lot more staff participation with the Tuesday lunch. We have a lot of folks even from town hall here that are buying the Tuesday lunch. But there is a lot of crossover between the Tuesday and Wednesday. We also, one of our biggest programs is our wellness and exercise programs. We contract with multiple providers to provide fitness programs of different likes and degrees from yoga, tai chi, line dancing, country line dancing. We have something for everyone, and that's very popular. Last year, we had 1,719 participants in our exercise programs. We also, of course, offer our transportation dial-a-ride, which actually is a service that is monitored and administered by social services. And we have our state statute municipal agent for the elderly. Social services programs, we are, of course, very busy, as always, serving our community. I have statistics for you. I'm not going to give them to you all on these programs, but if you have specific questions, I'm prepared to answer them for you. These are our highlights of what we provide. Most of them are financial-based, energy assistance renters rebate, financial assistance, all helping to put funding back into the pockets of people that are struggling the most financially in our community. We have several supplemental food programs that help to provide food to people that are in need in our community. We're very grateful to our local participants and businesses that donate and also sell to us at low-cost food for those programs. One of the exciting things that we're doing this year is we're renewing all of our applications for our largest food program, our Cheese Day program. That's something that people should be recertifying every year, and this year, we're rolling that out and recapturing new data. And to share with you something new that we're adding on, which we've been able to accomplish through our new social worker, is we're focusing on delivery of Cheese Day to our homebound individuals. And that's not just seniors, that's for our disabled individuals, too. And already, we have seven folks enrolled in the home delivery program. We've also been able to expand our volunteer base and programs available to our volunteers.
Just curious, how do you then, who does a delivery? And how, and what vehicle does it use?
Sure, and that's a good question. The initial month, our community social worker did the delivery, and part of that was also for her to be able to connect back with the people and assess how it's going. We're going to be working on having our volunteers do the delivery, and then that would be in their car. We are working on expanding our friendly visitor program. That has not yet, the details been discussed with our town manager as far as, you know, liability vehicles, how those things would work, but that's something-
And that's a program that's collaborative with the community at large, correct?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. We've had some faith-based organizations that have also approached us and asked us what we need most, and we're looking forward to expanding those programs and involving So we also have some services that are mandated by our state statutes, which is processing and handling all evictions and ejectments in the town. We had one that was very significant just a few months ago, and I was extremely grateful to have the assistance of our additional social worker because it was something that took two people and almost two months to resolve. So that's also a highlight from having a new staff person.
Yeah, I'm just going to quickly jump in on the point about evictions and relocations. So those are technically two separate statutes, but oftentimes, they do have sort of overlapping duties and responsibilities. One of the things that's really challenging about both evictions and relocations is that, as Krista mentioned, we can sometimes get these very complex cases, and unfortunately, we, the town, end up having to foot the bill for the eviction or, in some cases, relocation. And under the relocation statute, we need to provide up to $4,000, I believe, $4,000 per instance of relocation that were required to do by statute. So those are really difficult things to budget for, but they can be rather substantial. You know, for example, with the complex case we had with the eviction, we almost had to hire a specialized company because it was a very complex hoarding case, and that, when we were getting quotes, was in excess of $5,000. So these can add up. They don't happen often. It's not something that typically happens every day or every week, but when they do pop up, not only do they require a tremendous amount of staff time and energy, but they do tend to have a real financial impact against our budget.
Thank you. Some areas of focus. On my top of the list, which is very important to me and I feel will benefit the town and our ability to help serve our residents, will be the completion of the requirements for my LCSW license and my ability and preparation to sit for the boards. The boards are very extensive. It's a four-hour test, and I'm looking forward to hopefully taking that test this fall. In my year, many years prior, had met the working hours required to meet this license, and now I've been afforded through you the opportunity to meet the clinical hours related to this license. And I'm on track to complete 60 of those 100 hours by the end of this fiscal year. So again, my hope is to be able to take that test and report back to you before the end of the calendar year. And again, highlighting expansion of existing programs and services. Another really exciting new program that I think you knew about, we added in a sensory-friendly Santa and holiday program for our children that have special needs, and that was super exciting and popular to the extent that we are now planning a sensory-friendly Easter bunny. And we will be looking forward to other holiday events in relation to other faiths as well, and all are welcome to that. We're looking forward this year to completing a dial-a-ride RFQ process. That has not been done in a little while. We are happy with our current contracted vendor, but as, you know, through the process, as I said, has not been done in a while, so we are going to do that and select a vendor from that process. So that's a highlight for next year. Just dipping into what were the drivers in the cost increase for our overall budget. $39,177 or 15% increase in administration, and the bulk of that was related to the fact that we moved the salary and costs associated with our elderly outreach worker up into the administration line, previously had been budgeted separately, and we found that it just made sense to have her in our part-time administration line.
I'm just going to jump here. Really, what we are trying to do here is to capture all of our direct service staff in, again, one consolidated place for transparency purposes. It was very odd. We had this very small, sort of separate account where the part-time outreach worker was, and again, we did this to consolidate all of our direct service staff in one place.
And then we have, you know, our increase in salaries due to related contractual increases. And we also have, you'll see what looks like an increase in our public agency support. As Maria had previously mentioned, it is level funding at this point for our public agency support, but part of what was provided was in special revenue accounts. So now they're all being reflected in totality in my budget, but there's no impact to the net expenditure.
The only actual increase in there is the contractually negotiated hours, right?
Correct, contractually negotiated hours. And then we also had some small increases in other line items, for example, to continue my license and some increases to be able to support the education of our additional social worker. We also, similarly to the explanation that I just gave to you, there is an increase reflected in relation to dial-a-ride transportation. The true increase to that right now is a projected increase of a 2% for the contract. The increase that is shown is we had previously budgeted revenue for dial-a-ride in a separate line item, and now the whole amount is reflected with the revenue offsetting the costs.
That's the senior transportation tab, correct?
Correct, yes. Some of our challenges and goals for the upcoming year, continuing to meet the needs of our clients as demands for services increase, demands for services increase and resources potentially decrease. There were some threats to social services grants and budgets from the state last year. We haven't actively seen any this year, and we'll continue to keep our fingers crossed for that. What we see now is mostly in relation to the increased demands of services in relation to our staff resources, which right now, we are comfortable because we have that additional person. But each year, we do see an increase in things like applications for energy assistance renters rebates, access to food programs, asking for financial assistance, things like that. I believe that later in the program, you're going to see through capital projects, some discussion of renovations furthered with Eno, and you'll hear about that from Tom. So our goal would be to support the offices that are responsible for those renovations and help to have our clients and our seniors navigate through any construction, relocation of services, things of that nature. And to maintain dial-a-ride services while potentially changing service providers and helping to minimize any disruption or confusion to our clients. And of course, continued collaboration with our town departments and organizations to maintain these services.
Didn't we just update Eno? I'm confused.
Sure. So there are a few projects and out-years related to some entryway improvements to help with the grade of the ramp and to improve accessibility to the building, as well as some parking lot improvements. There's a small project regarding the clock tower in C and R that we'll be discussing a little bit later in Tom's presentation. I anticipate that will have less of an impact, but a few of the projects and out-years, again, we could see some potential impacts.
Okay. Any questions? Great, thank you.
You're welcome. I hope you have a good rest of the day.
Yeah, you too. Turn things over to our library director, Lisa Queen.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
The first thing I'd like to do before I start is to recognize two of our library board members who are here today, Gail Ryan and Polly Rice, and also to recognize our head of adult services, Susan Ray, who's also in the audience today.
Thank you.
Okay, so on our first slide, you will see that there is a small increase to the library budget of about $5,221 or a .33% increase. One of the things that I would, those are the increases primarily based upon contractual salary increases and small increases to our maintenance costs that are also contractual. One of the things that I'd like to clarify in this slide, when you see administration, within the administration is also the staff of the borrowing and technical services department, so it's not purely administration, it is actually on-the-ground frontline library staff. When you look at our FTEs, you'll see it's 23.1. I always like to remind you that the library is open seven days a week, 64 hours a week for 10 months of the year, so. Thank you, Melissa. Under services and programs, one of the things that I always like to point out to you as well is how much our library is used. There were, the per capita visit to the library last year was 14.9, whereas the Connecticut State average of visits to the library is only 5.3. So you can see that your library is very heavily used. We see about 1,100 people coming through the doors every single day that we're open. As far as services and programs go, we had 46,300 people attend 1,528 programs last year. So one of our primary services is obviously to educate, oh my goodness, what is wrong with me today? To educate and enrich the community by providing free and equal access, and that's very important. It's free and equal access to information, resources, and experience. Sorry, I'm just going to go point out to you that we offer volunteer opportunities and that those are all intergenerational volunteer opportunities. Last year, we had 3,100 volunteer service hours in the library, which was a 51% increase over the previous year. And if you look at the Connecticut dollar figure that the United Way uses for the average estimated value of an hour of volunteer service, it saved the library $93,700 by using those volunteer service hours. So we've always served as a community partner. We coordinate with all town departments, we coordinate with the public schools, we coordinate with businesses, we collaborate with other area libraries as ways of leveraging our resources and making sure that we don't duplicate efforts. And then we actively support the economic development of the town through the Business Resource Center program that we have at the library. And I can tell you that 1,619 people attended 234 programs put on by the Business Resource Center last year. They provided one-on-one assistance to about 48 people a month, per average, and that's job seekers, business owners, business representatives, entrepreneurs, so all kinds of people across the board. And that 48 people that they serve one-on-one each month is double what they served last year, so it's a highly valued service. Another service we provide is our Innovators Workshop, where we provide equipment and learning opportunities hands-on for all kinds of people, from entrepreneurs to job seekers to teens to young elementary school students. I can tell you that our Innovators Workshop use was up 66% over the previous year. And we also had 3,300 people attend our Second Annual Simsbury Mini Maker Fair. And I'll remind you that the Third Annual Mini Maker Fair is coming up on May 4th, so it will have a Star Wars theme, and we hope to see you all there. And we're hoping for good weather as well. One of the other core services that the library provides is a safe place for teens to engage with each other in quiet study, and they also gain vital opportunities for leadership and getting some workforce development skills. We have a teen advisory board, and the teens meet monthly, and they come together and they plan programs at the library, and they talk about current events, and they talk about issues that are, that they have to deal with on a daily basis. So it's a really valuable service. Coming up on March 30th, the teen services librarian, Sarah Ray, has been working with the Seroptimists to put on a Dream at Beeth conference, and it's a one-day Saturday conference for girls to empower them and help them investigate careers and where they might want to go in their, in their lives. We are also, last year, the recipient of the Connecticut Library Association Excellence in Library Service Award. That was for our Repair Cafe, which was the brainchild of Susan Ray and actually facilitated by our Business Resource Center Coordinator in conjunction with the Adult Services Department. We learned this week that we will again receive the Connecticut Library Association Excellence in Public Library Service Award. That will be for our Teen Job Center, which Sarah Ray works in conjunction with the Business Resource Center on. And what she does is she prescreens applicants for jobs within the community. Businesses in the community know that they can come to the library and say, "We have job openings." And they also work at the library to do some interviewing skill workshops, what's expected when you take a job, those kinds of things, to prep those kids so that they're successful when they do get a job. And we have successfully paired a number of teens with jobs in the community.
Can I just interrupt you for a second and say that Sarah has also been really instrumental in integrating teens into some of our community projects for Community for Care and on the 350th. And it's been really great to see, you know, the multi-generational interaction when they come together on these projects. It's been really inspiring.
Yeah, there's a lot of great energy when you mix generations together. Thanks, Melissa. The library's areas of focus are always based as a jumping board off of the library's strategic plan, which we put into place two years ago. And when we put that plan together, we did focus groups, and we tried to determine what were the aspirations of the people that live in the community and how the library could best help to meet them. And of course, we always work in conjunction with the town and the town manager to further the Board of Selectmen's initiatives and the town managers as well. So one of our primary areas of focus for this year is to maintain the library facility as a safe, comfortable, community gathering place, both physically and virtually. We will be completing our interior lower-level renovation late May, early June, so we will have an additional program space. But then we need to move on to interior maintenance with painting and recarpeting. After seeing so many visitors over the course of the last 10 years, it's time to refresh. Let's see, one of the, one of the parts of that interior maintenance project is to reorganize some of the space within the library so that we can come up with some more gathering areas in the library. We already know that once our program space is completed, we still need more gathering areas to meet demand. We will be collaborating with Public Works on the police department on maintenance and safety issues, and I want to thank Chief Bolter for working with us most recently on a community engagement initiative and also sort of a safety initiative within the library. It's similar to the one that they have with the schools, where there's an officer that visits the schools over the course of a day. We're hoping, and we have been successful so far, to have police officers walking through the library on a more regular basis, so that when library users and library staff see them, it's not, "Oh, what's going on? What's the matter?" It's more of a, you know, just a typical day at the library. And it also then creates that, you know, presence of the police within the library to enhance the security. Okay, we're also looking to become a certified passport acceptance agency in the next year, and that will provide better service to the community, but it will also be a source of generating revenue. We'll receive $35 for every passport that we process, and that's just sort of an expansion of the notary service that we already provide. And then we're hoping to expand the use of technology to offer additional virtual services and programs. We had new cameras installed in the program, in the program room this year, and the same cameras will be going into the new program space. That was a combined effort of funding between SCTV and the Friends of the Simsbury Public Library, and those new cameras actually help facilitate the streaming of live programs and events. Thank you. Another area of focus this year is to invest in the development of the library staff, because as we all know, they're the most valuable resource that the library has. So we're looking to cross-train staff to increase flexibility and ensure the ability to meet the service needs, which will be very important when we're trying to staff service desk 64 hours a week. We're going to develop a formal orientation process to be used in onboarding new staff. We are in the process of developing a staff Intranet as a means of sharing consistent information across all of our staff, that some of them work very part-time, so that they have access to information all the time. And we'll have our policies there, as well as documentation and best practices, as well as town policies. And then every, every month at our staff meeting, we, we offer peer-driven customer service learning opportunities, so we'll be continuing along, continuing along those lines. One of the things that I think is a valuable service that the library provides, and I know the town manager agrees, is customer service. Another area of focus is to increase collaboration with town departments and boards, as we always do, leveraging our resources and then reaching out to a wider audience. We will obviously be deploying the Business Resource Center Coordinator and the center itself in active support of the newly-formed Economic Development Commission and overall town economic development. We are currently working with Simsbury Free Bike and the Farmington Valley Trails Council on a book bike outreach program. What that would mean is that the library would actually own a bike, and it would have resources, like materials, on the back of the bike, and library staff or volunteers could take it out onto the trails and meet people where they are. We are currently looking to investigate-
Yeah, focus on either reading or biking. Don't do two.
You can't do it while biking.
Right, Jake?
But you can listen, you can listen while you're biking.
I was, I was actually-
Earphones are dangerous. You gotta be able to wear traffic, you know?
Okay.
I was actually run-
You should not put anything in your ears while you're biking.
I was actually run off the, the trail system rollerblading with a kid that was looking at their cellphone.
Yeah.
And literally pushed me right off.
So noted. So noting while biking.
That kid knew what he was doing. No, actually, it reminded me of you behind that, Sean.
We all know you won't see me on a bike.
So we're also investigating new community partners to help support our intergenerational summer reading program. For the summer reading program this year, we're actually working with Westminster, who will be funding the production of a Simsbury coloring book, and the art in the coloring book is actually put together by different artists across the community.
Cool.
And we are working right now, collaborating with Parks and Recreation on the installation of a story walk coming in spring of 2020, hopefully, in celebration of the 350th anniversary. And that story walk has been generously funded by the investor angels of the Friends of the Public Library, so.
Lisa, and we will have a presentation to the board at one of our March meetings regarding that potential project and the donation.
Great.
Another area of focus in fiscal year 1920 is to provide leadership for libraries nationally and throughout Connecticut. Some of the things that you're probably not aware of, but your library staff actually volunteers throughout the state and the nation on various committees, supporting and promoting library service, and also bringing back professional development here in Simsbury. So it makes Simsbury ranking among the nation and within the state as providing leadership. So I will begin my one-year term as president of the Connecticut Library Association in July. We have two staff that will be serving as the co-chairs of the Connecticut Library Association Annual Conference next year. Susan Ray serves as the Region Two representative for the Connecticut Library Association. We have Sarah Ray, the teen services librarian, serves on the Nutmeg Committee for Children's Literature. And then Stephanie Prado, our head of Children's Services, serves as the Chair of the American Library Association Early Childhood Programs and Services Committee. So the drivers in our budget, as I mentioned before, there are increases due to staff salaries due to the negotiated contractual step increases. We did have some savings due to staff attrition, because we had some retirements, and then we have increases in contractual service costs. Trends and challenges for us in the coming year? Obviously, one of the things we always try to do is we strive to provide user-focused services through, through a variety of means and in variety of locations throughout the town, so that we meet people where they are, not just within the physical building. People have the ability to use the library around the clock, 24/7, virtually through our website. You can download material, you can watch movies, you can read magazines, you can use databases, you can use some of our databases to take classes in technology or any other kind of things that you're interested in. And then we use the talents and skills of our community to provide programming through volunteers. That also saves the library money. So we, you know that the library does thousands of other things now, but really, circulation of material is still a key function of the library. Simsbury circulation per capita is about 15.6 items, whereas the Connecticut State average is down at 6.7 items. So you'll see it still is a core service, and we are continually evaluating the things that we do and the things that we purchase to make sure that it's done in the most cost-effective manner. I spoke about this before, but we, we know that, again, once the program space is completed downstairs, we still know that we need extra gathering spaces within the library. So we're constantly looking for ways that we can make better use of the space that we have and make it more flexible. One of the other challenges that we have specifically for me is keeping up with the administrative demands of the town and library processes and workflow with limited resources. A number of years ago, the administrative secretary position at the library was cut to 17 hours. What we've been, we realized quite quickly that that was not going to be adequate to support everything that goes on at the library and me specifically. So what we've been trying to do is build it up incrementally over the course of the years, and it, now we're at about 25 hours a week, and it's still a challenge. I would say every week, I do about five hours of administrative secretary work, just to make sure that we are keeping on track with everything that needs to get accomplished. And just like everyone else, we continue to monitor state funding for libraries. One of the things that seems to always be up for elimination is the borrow-at-reimbursement funds, and that's, Simsbury is reimbursed for other users from other towns that come to Simsbury and use our resources through the state budget, and that seems to always be up for elimination. Currently, it is in the governor's proposed budget for next year, but we will continue to monitor that. And what it, what it means really is a direct loss of about $19,000 for us, should it ever be eliminated. I spoke about this last year. Another challenge that we have is that the Connecticut State Library restructured its Deliverit program, and Deliverit allows people within the state of Connecticut to use any library with their library card, but also then return material to any library within the, within the state. It also helps support the library consortium, Library Connection, that we're a part of, with resource sharing and leveraging of collections, so that we don't need to own every single book. We can get that book from Avon or Cranby or Glastonbury. But with the way that Deliverit's been restructured by the state, it's required that our consortium and other consortiums across the state to create supplemental delivery services that currently Library Connection is funding out of reserves, but we all know that that is not sustainable. So we continually look for cost-effective ways to solve the delivery issue, but it really does impact the level of service that we can provide. And then our, our capital project for next year is a replacement of our automated book handler, and I know it seems like a lot of money. What I can tell you is that in 2010, this piece of material and actually our entire RFID system at the library, that includes the self-checkout systems, was purchased with a Housing and Urban Development grant. So the town actually did not fund the purchase of this equipment. We have been paying maintenance for it over the course of the nine years. It's a, it's a sole-source piece of equipment because it integrates integrally with our RFID system. It's processed well over a million items at this point. It's been in operation for 10 years, which is three years past its life expectancy. We've been tracking issues with it since late December. We've been tracking issues with it since late December, and since then, we've had 22 working issues that have required staff intervention on the equipment. And we're also finding it hard to find replacement parts at this point. And that's what it looks like. So in layman's terms, it's the book return, the automated book return on the upper level. We did some calculations and some studying, and we determined that it does save about $13,000 in staff costs annually. So the cost recovery on this piece of equipment is about five and a half years.
Any questions for Lisa?
I'm thinking on the revenue side, not on the expenditure side.
Sure.
So is it dropping $24,000 on the revenues?
I can take this.
Library fees and copies?
I think, Maria, is-
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So something I mentioned in the presentation on Monday night, as part of this particular budgeting process, we really made a concerted effort to better estimate our revenue projections. And for some reason, I can't speak to why this was happening, a number of our departmental revenues, the departments weren't actually being consulted during budget development. And some of the numbers, while we were budgeting a number, they were coming in consistently on a historic basis too high or too low. So the department heads worked with us this year in developing, again, sort of more reasonable or realistic revenue projections. And we did have that one particular line item. This was the first time Lisa had actually been consulted on revenue projections. And so that was the line item that was underperforming. So that's, again, just to sort of reflect a more accurate number of what we're actually projecting for that particular revenue source.
And that revenue source is library fines. And what we found over the past five to seven years is that circulation has been going down, and that's a national trend. So when circulation goes down, obviously, your late fines go down.
So we collected $39,000 in '18. We've collected 27 so far in '19, and we're dropping all the way to $19,020?
We also instituted a new service at the library, which libraries in our consortium were instituting, and it's automatic renewal so that you don't actually have to facilitate the renewal of your material if there's no hold on the item. I can say it's been very favorably received by everyone, especially moms with young children who cannot sometimes remember in their hectic lives.
And that's with young children from personal experience.
Which is another reason that revenue and fines would go down.
We implemented a significant lost book mitigation plan from '19 because of your comments last year, to my household at least. So we're partly-
That's the revenue drop right there.
Yeah, we're partly responsible, although we did lose a Star Wars book yesterday. The central school.
Where I'm going with this is, does it renew into perpetuity, or is there any delay?
Of when items renew.
Is there an accountability factor still here?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, and actually, what studies have been done nationally, and what people have found is that it's not the fines that encourage people to return materials.
Okay, so besides all that, if I take a library book and don't bring it back, when do I have to pay for it?
At this point, you would have to pay for it two months after it's due. And that would still hold true. Lost material would still be paid for, damaged material would still be, you'd be accountable for that. If there's a hold on the item, certainly, nothing could renew.
Are patrons who have a lost book out like that able to, or are additional books?
Once they have a lost book that they've been charged for, no. They will be blocked from borrowing.
Oh, you get that.
Oh, yeah, we get that. I get that. I get that. That's why I use Overdrive now, sorry.
I could've asked you.
Because you don't get flagged on Overdrive on the eBooks. Not going to go in reverse, but the book handler, I know it's going to be out there, as you look at the ones for the future, do they have the same lifespan generally?
They still have that 10-year life expectancy. Actually, they're recommending more seven years because I think Rick pointed this out this morning. Technology is moving so quickly.
Sure.
Yeah, that they're currently improving. I mean, they're continually improving it.
So how much should we pay over the life of it for maintenance, then?
Over the life of the current book handler that we paid in maintenance is about $54,000.
So if you add that to the cost-
Cost, it's still below the-
Doesn't that make it upside down for a seven-year lifespan? You said it was 13-
Yeah, it's below the $13,000 a year you saved.
He said it saves you $13,000 a year.
But if you add the 73 to 50, then first what were that?
I agree. You're upside down. It's not that it's a determiner, it's just information.
Yeah. We're upside down.
It's still a service, though. We look at it as a service.
It's sole-source. There's not much we can do about that, unfortunately. When we are not upgrading the book handler, we are purchasing the comparable model.
Other questions?
Maria, you were going to add something. Just quickly going back to the fines, we're actually planning a presentation to you for your March 26 meeting about library fines. There's this really new and interesting trend that's been developing over the last few years about replacing fines with essentially donations, if you will, for late materials. And there's been a lot of analysis on this. The library board has reviewed this issue and has endorsed potentially a new concept for us. And so it's great that this topic actually came up because we do plan to present to you in about a month on this to see if it's a concept that you all might be interested in having us pursue.
Yeah, I was concerned that we were eliminating accountability, which seems to also be a trend in this country. So we got to make sure that accountability is part of life.
He had to get that in today at some point in the budget discussion. I know, I love you still.
The studies have shown that the accountability is still there.
That's what I hear about.
And anecdotally, we know in this community particularly, if people know that someone is waiting for a book, or they realize that it's a shared resources, they bring it back. And currently, our seniors don't pay fines. So we do already have a precedent set for one demographic of the population. And they actually get their books back sooner than anyone else.
I bet.
Yeah.
So this discussion will reflect the discussion the library board had because that was all part of their conversation, so.
Like with anything, we discuss things out of order with the budget and the tracks. So it's pertinent to discuss it today, too.
Okay.
Because if it's a revenue item, and if we're down $24,000 in revenue and we don't agree with that policy.
Which is why we're coming to present to you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
We'll move next to engineering and Jeff Shea.
Okay. All right. Good morning, everybody. I'm going to give you a brief presentation on the work of the Engineering Department this morning and our budget proposal for fiscal year 1920. Our proposed budget is $291,227, which is actually a 9.8% increase due to primarily two things. One, the full cost of our project engineers being carried in the budget now. Last year was actually not carried in the budget. And you'll see later, just as a reminder, the Board of Ed actually contributes $20,000 towards that position, towards the salary. So from an accounting perspective, I believe they wanted to clean that up in the Finance Department. And in addition to that, there's some minor contractual obligation costs that are also included in that cost increase. Services and programs that the Engineering Department provides, just going back, and it's 2.86, I believe, in your budget, FTE in the department, which is two full-time and one part-time person. Our services and programs are essentially capital project planning, development, development and management support for projects both managed by us and through other departments. We provide various levels of service and technical support. For example, we work with the library on the library project, social services and public works on the Eno renovations recently, Parks Department on trail projects, pool projects, whatever. All the recreational facilities, we usually get involved at some level. Most of the time, we manage the actual construction contracts. We do the bidding, manage the consultants, that type of thing. We also work with the Board of Ed in various levels of involvement. For example, we participated in the selection of the consultant for the Facilities Master Plan project that they're working on right now and hopefully going to be starting our own Facilities Master Plan process very soon. We also review proposed development projects. We work very closely with the Planning Department in terms of the technical reviews of the plans submitted to that department. And also utility projects, which seem to be more common these days. Water main replacements, ever-source projects for transmission lines, that type of thing. So we review those projects and hopefully provide some positive input for locating those facilities within the public right of way. We also manage the GIS platform, support the data in there, make sure it's current, add data as we can. And that supports economic development, we think, and we've gotten a very positive feedback on that particular platform. We also manage various grants from various state agencies. FEMA, the State Department of Social Services, DOT, DEEP. So we have to do reporting and financial requests for reimbursement on those grant agreements that we have currently related to projects. Some of our areas of focus for next year are, again, management of capital projects primarily. We currently have 28 active projects worth about $10.4 million. Some of them are as small as $30,000 and some are as large as two-plus million dollars. So it's quite a range of projects. Some of the more important near-term projects are the One Old Bridge Park project, which we're actively working on to get out to bid the next month. The Terrafill Bloomfield Multi-Use Trail Project, which is about 90% design complete right now. It's in DOT's review, and we're hoping to get that out to construction for this year. The other trail project is the Multi-Use Trail Project from Route 10 to Curtis Park, which is also in approximately 30% design phase right now and will be probably built during 2020. Town Facilities Master Plan, which is, again, funded, that was a project that was delayed because of other project priorities. We do have a fairly solid RFP. We hope to go out to RFP in the next month or two. So we have that information for the next budget cycle. Drake Hill Road Bridge and Riverside Road Improvements, that's a legacy project that goes back to 2014. We've been working through some permitting issues, and we think we're at a point now we can go out to bid this year and coordinate that with the old Drake Hill or the old bridge projects, hopefully minimize the impact to the community. Two new projects that are in design, Firetown Road and Barn Door Hill Road Bridges over Bissel Brook. Those projects are being funded 50% by state grants, and we're, again, just initiating the design on those projects. And we continue to support the MS4 stormwater management requirements. As you've heard some of that information, you'll probably hear more from Tom, but we provide technical advice.
It's on my budget.
Oh, sorry, Tom. So we collaborate with the Public Works Department on, again, sampling and reporting to DEEP on that particular program. As I spoke to you earlier about the full-time salary line item was increased to accommodate the full cost of the project engineer in the budget, there's really no net impact with the exception of the contractual obligations at the bottom line. And there's no other significant changes to the budget.
Thank you. Other questions?
One more slide, Eric.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's all right. Trying to be brave.
It sounded so final.
Jeff has a question. Can I please finish my presentation?
So these are just some more projects that we're involved with that really aren't town projects, but they're critical projects for economic development and just to keep things moving and keep the community protected from whatever, you know, negative impacts might occur from the projects. As Mike Glidden had mentioned earlier, Deepwater Wind, we've been working hard on that for quite a long time now. That appears to be going this year. The Ridge at Talke Mountain, we've been working with the developer to collaborate on performance bonds and, you know, COs to get that project occupied so he can get some cash flow going on that project. Cambridge Crossing, which is a residential development off of Hoskins that's underway. The Wagner Parcel, which Mike also mentioned, which is probably going to be coming to the land use boards this year. Land use regulation updates, Mike mentioned that. He's updating zoning regs. We're collaborating on the engineering standards to try to get those up to speed and more current to make our reviews easier when the applications actually come in. And he also mentioned Highcroft Parcel Six is most likely going to construction this year, so we're revisiting the approved plans on that and most likely will be involved with that. And again, Mike spoke about a lot of things that we collaborate on, the FEMA risk analysis, the mapping, which will certainly affect property owners. We don't know what's coming on that, but, you know, expect the unexpected. So there'll be communication requirements, we think, with citizens on that. And, you know, we'll review the technical information provided through FEMA. And, you know, just the general maintaining project schedules to the extent possible. We're constantly, I guess, adjusting our priorities, again, because development projects and the need for services relative to them is so uncertain in terms of the timing. So we do our best to keep the projects moving, but also keep the private sector projects moving also. And we also always look for grant opportunities that are, you know, good opportunities, not opportunities that we're wasting our time and we're just sending in an application. And we work collaboratively with Tom on that through CROG and just general opportunities that we see out there in the so-called marketplace. We talked about One Old Bridge Road as proposed in the budget. We're about $150,000 short. Consistent with our prior capital request, if you look at last year's budget, there was a request for additional funding in the out years. We knew we were going to be short on that. So I believe the intent is to try to fund that with fund balance in this fiscal year, but I just wanted to be aware of that. That would allow us to actually complete everything as proposed in the original concept plan.
Sorry, Jeff, I just want to jump in. Not fund balance, but the FEMA reimbursement that we received back to the 2011 storm during your last quarterly budget status report. We had shared with you, we had received an unanticipated $120,000 in revenue, and we currently do not need to apply that to any expenditures. And just given sort of the pressing nature of this project and the aggressive timeframe that we have to work with it, we'll be bringing that to you in the Board of Finance this spring as a proposal to use as unanticipated revenues to help close this project gap.
I thought we were getting, we have a FEMA grant of, what, $45,000?
$41,000, that's right.
I thought we were going after a much larger number, $300,000.
We are. It's actually, that's incorrect. It's like $270,000, I believe, is what we're asking for.
Okay.
It involves both hazards material removal, and there's a minor demolition item of that retaining wall that we're trying to capture some grant money on that, too. So you're correct on that.
We can't just let the private burn it down.
From an environmental perspective, I don't think it's a good idea with the proximity to the river.
I'm not suggesting it in the legal system.
Hazardous materials, Sean.
Well, we did it with Dewey, so.
We most likely allow them in there to do some training exercises before we actually demo it, but.
Do you have to retain the wall to fall into the river?
We're hopeful that stands up or actually we take it down.
You're making fun of me. Well, we mitigated the Dewey town, the Dewey farm. We didn't let them burn it down.
As the slide says, we're also seeking those additional FEMA funds, and we're hoping to hear on that in the next, I'll hold my breath on that because I'm not sure when, but we've been pressing to get an answer on that, and hopefully it comes soon.
Thank you.
In the out years, we've also asked for a couple hundred thousand dollars more on the municipal campus improvements that were partially, or were funded, actually, I think in 2016 or '17. We found that we're coming up short on the needs and the costs of what need to be done on this campus, which include things like repaving, handicap accessibility, a new storage for public works in the police department on site, some security fencing, landscaping, various items, the sidewalk in the front of the building. So there's quite a few costs that we think are going to require additional funds.
So we talked about that, but I thought we had allocated enough money to at least realign the entrance and exit with the post office so we didn't have the boondoggle we have up there.
You did. We've been working with DOT on that, and what we had proposed is not something they're supportive of, so we're looking at alternatives.
That ground pedestrians get hit. I mean.
I could thank the state for that.
So ultimately, again, they're the judge and jury on that.
Yeah, all right.
But we do have a plan, and we think it's an improvement. It may not be ideal, but it's an improvement. And I think that's it.
Thank you.
Open any questions?
Other questions?
No, thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to Tom Roy's presentation of highways and facilities.
I can do it. You want me to do it? Which one is it? I can pop here.
I'll just say for the record, Tom-
Yep.
-that my drive-in, the local roads were in much better condition than the state roads.
Well, in that case, we're done here.
Good.
You know, it's kind of that old sales pitch. Once you get them to yes, that's when you hit the brake, so.
Right.
Yeah, today made for an interesting day, and I think we were somewhat fortunate. The storm was a little bit smaller than even what was predicted at this time yesterday morning. Unfortunately, it looks like we might have a little bit of nonsense tonight, and then what could be a substantial storm. what could be a substantial storm tomorrow night.
Yeah.
So busy weekend for the department. Well, I'm happy to be here today, I think, and I have Tony Piazza, who's going to represent the WPCA. He's here for questions. He decided not to stand right behind me because he thought it might look intimidating, but... We start off with what appears to be some great news in that we're looking at overall within the Public Works budget. And when we talk about Public Works, we are going to differentiate the difference between Public Works and WPCA because WPCA is an enterprise fund. So WPCA is funded, or I'm sorry, the Public Works as funded through the general fund is looking at a 7.3% decrease with an overall budget of about $3.75 million. That decrease is due in part to some of the transfers and some of the transparency operations that we'll get into in a little bit. Within Public Works, we have administration, which is essentially myself. We have an administrative secretary, and we have a project administrator. That is going up just a slight bit at 2.6%, primarily due to salaries and a few small items within contractual services. Facilities for our various buildings is going up by about 3.5%, and we're going to touch a little bit on where some of those increases are coming from. Highway, again, looks fantastic at almost an 11% decrease, but again, some of that has to do with what we've done with our plow truck, which was in our operating budget last year and has now come out of our operating budget. And then the transfer station quietly sitting over there on Wolkit Road, which so many of our residents love, we're going to also see a decrease in the operational costs associated with that. So all in all, we're really coming in with a very lean budget within Public Works. We're looking at just over 30 employees. We have one part-time employee. Everybody else is full-time. The bulk of our staff is within the Highway Department just because of the size of the town and the amount of work that needs to get done. Switching gears over to the WPCA. WPCA, again, with being an enterprise fund, it's a very robust budget. It all comes from user fees. The WPCA and all of the work done down there is done with 10 employees, so they do a great job. And really, the point I always like to stress with the WPCA, everybody thinks, you know, oh, my God, they have a tough job. It's gross. It's disgusting. It's dirty water. Their primary purpose in everything they do is to protect the environment. When you look at the Farmington River and the fact that it is a pristine water body, the water that they discharge into the Farmington River is cleaner than the upstream water. So it's really, really what they do. They certainly don't make the dirty water that they have to treat. We touch on a little bit administration and what we do within Public Works admin is really where we come down to customer service. That is the person answering the phone on those days, like I'm sure Monday and Tuesday will be, where there might be some people who are a little concerned about the plowing. I will tell you, we've been getting more and more and more phone calls from people who have just been happy with the services that we're providing. It has really been an upward trend, I'd say, over the last five years. We take care of all of the bids, the grants. We do all of the bidding and RFPs and RFQs, and that's all done through a very small division within Public Works. That's also where we take care of things like the Sustainable CT Initiative that we talked about last month. That's where we do our bike programs. It's really kind of the backbone of the organization. Within building maintenance, it's maintenance of all of our major town buildings. It's making sure that the lights come on, that they're clean, that they're organized. Heating, ventilation, air conditioning systems, always a challenge, making sure that everybody's as comfortable as they can be within a public building. Highway Department, we have 165 miles town-owned roadways. As we saw this morning, we did some plowing. It's also all of the paving work, the enormous amount of roadside trees that we have to manage and take care of. And one of the things that I think really the Highway Department doesn't get the credit they deserve is we're really a huge part of emergency services here in town, whether it's during a blizzard or just last week where we had about 35 trees come down during that windstorm. Our staff is working hand-in-hand with Nick's staff. We're also working very closely with the Fire District in making sure that roads were open, where we had downed power lines, that they were safe and clear. But they really, that was a huge storm, which got cleaned up within 24 hours. So it was really a great job by everybody involved in that. The other thing that's falling into this year's budget under Highway is our MS4 that Jeff alluded to. It's tough, but we have stormwater. We have stormwater concerns. A huge part of what keeps our roads in good conditions is our stormwater system where we collect rainwater from the roads and discharge it in an appropriate way to the nearest water body. New state standards, we have to monitor and test at such a high level compared to what we did in the past, there's a substantial cost. We're looking at about a $27,000 increase for the work in this upcoming fiscal year for that endeavor. Transfer station, like we said, it's contracted through this company, Paine's. We also, through that transfer station light item, is where we hold our three household hazardous waste collections, two here in Simsbury and one in Farmington. I know we've touched upon today a few little pieces of shared services. That is one where it's truly a regional effort. Simsbury's been the lead in coordinating with four other towns so that we share all of the costs. We used to do that through the larger program with MDC. By kind of going off on our own, we've saved substantial money, and we've gained a level of control so that we can tailor what we're doing to what our residents need, as opposed to trying to make everybody happy and end up kind of hitting somewhere in the middle. WPCA, talking 3.8 million gallons per day is the capacity of the facility. Interestingly enough, it's only running at about half-capacity now. We're always looking for new customers. One of the huge things that the WPCA does is support economic development with some of these larger apartment complexes couldn't come online if it wasn't for having a treatment plant to take care of that infrastructure need. We touched on the fact that it protects the Farmington River, and it's also interesting that our plant also services a portion of both Avon and Granby. I can assure you, they pay their fair share. We have a great agreement in place with them. They're effectively co-owners of the plant with us. Some of the things that we're focusing on for this year, upcoming, we have our new sidewalk rehabilitation program, which is really going to be a big effort as we move into the upcoming construction season. We're working on our compliance with that MS4 stormwater requirements. We continue to really work on our ability to provide customer support, and one of the things that we want to do is have an online outwardly facing work order system. So if you have an issue that you'd like to report to Public Works, we'd like you to be able to do it 24/7 online, and that's actually going to facilitate and streamline our processes. We have a number of capital projects that we've been managing. We have the DPW expansion. We're working on the library parking lot. We have some trail maintenance that we're hoping to do this summer. As Jeff mentioned, there's a large water main project coming. We work hand-in-glove with engineering on these things. We work very closely with the planning department on some of the upcoming developments. We are not short of work right now. The Emerald Ash Borer, which we'll talk about in a little bit in more detail, we've gone through two seasons now of our aggressive tree removal process with that. It's been a substantial effort. It's unfortunate to see the number of trees that have come down, but once they've been infested, there's little that can be done to keep them going. And I think, again, one of the things that we're really known for is our pavement management. We have great roads. We want to keep the roads in the condition that they're in now. Some of the drivers that we have, we're looking at a little over $28,000 in increases due to labor and overtime. This is, again, negotiated salary increases, step increases. Eno Memorial Hall this year is going to see a little bit of a bump up, just under $5,000. We had reduced all of our operating costs at Eno last year based upon the fact that we thought the building was going to be closed during the renovations. It was fortunate for the users that we were able to keep it open during Eno. We are right now working on absorbing those costs that we had not necessarily anticipated, but bringing this back up to a level set and kind of the savings we saw last year are being made up for here. This gets into a little bit of our transparency. We took $180,000 out of the Highway Department budget, and it's going to be moved to CNR Fund. There's no net impact on the overall budget, but it does, it does make the Highway Department look like we're having a massive cut when we're actually not losing out on anything. Typically, what we do with our fleet is we replace one large truck each year. It keeps the overall fleet being the same age, so it's not a case of all of a sudden buy 10 new trucks, everything's great for three or four years, then they all fall apart at the same time. The nice thing we do is as a truck comes in, it's assigned to a driver. It stays with that driver through the life of the truck, and therefore it gives them a sense of responsibility. If, and I know many of you have gone out in our trucks, I can assure you, you open the door, you're not going to get a whole bunch of garbage or coffee cups or anything else. They treat them like their own vehicles, or they don't have them.
I have a question on that.
Sure.
Last year, we debated, in the interest of transparency, we put that in the operating budget.
Yeah.
Because the concern was if it was in capital, I mean, I argued with you guys on whether it was capital or operating, and it ended up in the operating budget.
Sure. So that change happened at the Board of Finance level. One of the major areas of discussion last spring, particularly at the Board of Finance level, was, you know, what's capital, what's operating, and it sort of was the circle of endless debate. And so one of the items I encouraged the Board of Finance to consider through its chair was to develop the capital and CNR budgeting policy, which they just adopted at their last meeting. So now there's a really good, there's really good guidance in terms of what is operating, what's capital. So all of our fleet purchases were defined as a capital purchase, but they are smaller capital purchases, so those are now being budgeted for in the CNR Fund. So that's why we have moved the truck operating into the CNR Fund. Similarly, under what is capital, our paving expenses meet the definition now of what is capital. And so for things besides, you know, if it's just like a quick patch job, there is some money in the operating budget for paving associated with the sorts of minor repairs. But when it's, you know, paving, you know, miles of road, that does meet our definition of capital. So that particular paving money has been moved out of operating into the capital budget. And again, I think that will be helpful moving forward, that new policy document, because again, I think it sets sort of clear expectations in terms of, again, what is operating, what's capital, to hopefully reduce some of those questions and debate.
So I agree with you. The caveat, though, is what happens if those two don't make the list? Because we have to prioritize capital, and again, given the conversation we're going to have this afternoon, if that 360 doesn't make the list, is this really what we want to do?
Sure. So, you know, my advice again, and we've been having some discussions last budget cycle and this budget cycle, is for our routine and baseline needs, when we can, doing our best to pay for those items with cash, and that if we fall too far behind in our routine and baseline needs, that sort of deferred maintenance or deferred fleet purchases really does add up in the long term, and thinking about those baseline needs sort of differently from items that we would typically bond for. So that is something I do hope we can have some really good conversation around. And we've also been starting to really try and quantify what, in fact, our baseline needs are. We do not have good numbers for anything except for paving. I think we're making good progress, though. We now have a good paving number. We now have a good sidewalk number. We are engaging in the parks and open space master plans. We're going to have a really good capital number for those items. We also have funding to do our facilities master plan. So what's going to be really helpful with all of this is for fleet, our building needs. Again, these are the basic routine capital needs we have, and oftentimes they do tend to be smaller in nature, is we'll be able to come up with a really good solid number of, you know, are those baseline capital needs, is it $2.5 million a year in cash? Is it two? Is it three? And to be honest with you, I can't tell you yet what that number is, but what I can tell you is we are making good progress to getting there so we can have a really, I think, good sort of intelligent conversation about what that ideal amount of cash should be on an annual basis. And again, that would be completely separate from projects that we would need to or want to bond for, but that will be part of this afternoon's conversation.
It is. I just, again, I know the Board of Finance decides how to fund things, but, you know, we've had history and policies in place to protect items that we have to buy from political decisions or misguided decisions at both board levels. And I agree with everything we've done, but if mistakes get made at either our level or the Board of Finance level, we are not maintaining the assets in this town properly. So we can have all the policies and procedures we want. If the six people don't make the right decision, it doesn't matter what the policy is. And are we, can we supersede that and protect our assets by leaving it in our operating budget? Because, again, with all due respect to the Board of Finance, we have not always seen eye to eye on capital. We've not always seen eye to eye on how to fund things, and they seem to ignore our prioritization. And...
Sean, can I also add, because part of what I'm hearing, I think this is a really good conversation, part of what I'm hearing, there's things that we need to have continuity of funding for.
We have to have these trucks.
So is this new policy increasing that or decreasing that? I guess it's kind of the essence of what I would want to explore.
Yeah.
And it's not, it's, you know, Sean worded it correctly. It's both boards that have contributed to this. Sometimes it's the Board of Selectmen that doesn't fund what they need to fund. Other times, it's a way that the Board of Finance is managing it.
Right.
Part of what I really applaud about, you know, this budget that you've worked on is it seems you're really trying to make sure that we are consistently and appropriately putting the right amount of capital in, so that's really important.
It is.
So it's, I haven't looked enough at the new policy to know whether it increases or decreases it, but I would absolutely share a concern if it decreases that continuity.
Hey, correct me if I'm wrong, but the new policy gets rid of our traditional CNR five-year payback, correct?
No, no.
They left that in there?
We did leave that in there. And we do have an update on that for you when we do get to the CNR wrap-up discussion at the end of the day. I'd be happy to bump that up now if you prefer. Okay, but we will touch on that this afternoon.
Yeah, I'm not trying to...
Tom doesn't want to stand there.
I'm not trying to...
Great, I'm standing here. Maria's taking all the pressure.
My only point in bringing it up is in my last eight years, we've debated, CNR is transparent, operating budget's transparent, new funds transparent, and I agree, this is very transparent, and I love it from a policy standpoint. But at the end of the day, 12 volunteers make the decision, which goes to the voters, and we can have all the policies we want. If people don't follow them in the spirit of their created, we have substantial service delivery issues. We have to have these plows. We have to have police cars, you know? And I want to make sure that no matter what we do, we're preserving at least our end of the bargain, and the Board of Finance may do what they choose to do. So I'll be quiet now.
My perspective, I agree with the discussion we're having now, but we also need to be looking forward because, as we've heard so far most of this morning, we're going to be growing. We're going to need more plows. We're going to need more cruisers. All of these things are going to grow, and if we get too focused on last year's budget in this year's budget, we're going to miss the fact that we've got more roads to plow and we've got more people to protect in various ways.
Yeah, absolutely right.
It'll be an interesting afternoon.
All right, I'm going to keep going because I know I'm between you and lunch. Similar to what we're doing with the truck, I think we just covered it, we're moving $180,000 out of our operating budget into capital, which is part of our roadway paving program. Couple of nice highlights, really, we did great this year in our procurement of utilities. We're seeing a significant decrease in our upcoming projection for electricity. This is something where, going into this cycle, we really thought we were going to see an increase, but we're actually decreased. It was a tough couple of weeks because we literally are waiting for a strike price and we're waiting for it to hit a number that we need, and it's, it's not, I did not go into this business to play the stock market. That's a lot what it felt like back in December, but we did really well, and we're happy with the rates that we had for both electricity and gas and diesel. I think Nick sent me an email saying, you know, "Tom, I thought you said it was going up." I gladly offered to take the savings, but...
Are you seeing savings from the solar panels on the roof?
The solar panels have been installed at WPCA. We just effectively started the project for the solar panels at the skating center. Being that we've been deep into winter, we are just, you know, we're seeing that they're working, but we have not gone through enough to see the savings yet.
Are you counting on those in your budget?
They are not counting on them. There's something about chicken and eggs before they happen. We did not count in that.
Okay.
Out at Public Works. And like we said, with the skating center, it's still my favorite project because we're going to use the sun to make ice.
What about the, what about the streetlight acquisition?
The streetlight acquisition has been fantastic in what we're saving. We went from paying $140,000, $145,000 a year for our streetlights, which included both the electricity and the maintenance, and it was all lumped into the price that we paid Eversource in their electricity rate. We're now, I think this year, we're budgeting $42,000, which includes both maintenance and electricity. Knock on wood, I think we've had one phone call about our lights and not a single complaint. We've had a couple that have been broken or failed. We've gone out and fixed them. It has really been a very quiet success.
But we should make that a louder success because, you know, we had a substantial debate with the Board of Finance on funding that, and, you know, you stuck your neck out on the savings and you're achieving those savings numbers, so that should, again, be a testament to sometimes it makes sense to invest in resources because we do save in the budget, so.
I appreciate that.
Definitely bring that up.
WPCA, our user fees, which, again, that's really our baseline budget for the work they're doing, continues to be below industry standard. Annual fee for a residential home is $352. And the businesses are charged based upon their water use in the spring and fall. That way, if they were to use lawn irrigation or anything else, it wouldn't offset the calculation. And again, WPCA can't say anything more than they are fanatical about being fair and transparent in how they charge their fees. We have a few challenges, one of which is the capacity of our facilities and maintenance staff, our custodians that do all the work they do. It's great this year, kind of coming up after both Kristen and Lisa presented about all the new programs at the library in Eno. Our staff is in the background supporting all of those events. In fact, actually, at the Maker Fair, one of our custodians, one of our maintainer custodians, spends the day there helping to fix things. So we love to be involved in it, but it's an increased stress. As we add a new program, it's additional resources. You know, we've all been there for Cheese Day and seen the amount of resources that go out the door. Well, they all came in in cardboard boxes and bins that need to be broken down and brought out and recycled. And it's all effort. And again, I'm very proud of what that department does, but it's, we don't need a new person at this point, but we're saying each and every year that we add new programs, it's stressing that department a little bit more. We got to hit a little bit on the unfunded mandates, which is the MS4. We're looking at some new challenges that may be coming our way from DEEP regarding trash and recycling. It's something we'll probably be looking to bring to this board in about the next six weeks. We're working with a regional collaborative, who belong to the Central Connecticut Solid Waste Authority, which is a subset of CROG, to make sure that all of us communities together are responding to some of the DEEP requests in a uniform voice. They're asking us and encouraging us rather strongly to look at things like pay-as-you throw, where they want to have different rates based upon how large your trash container is. They really, part of the pay-as-you throw, they want to have actual, they want to sell bags, where each bag costs a certain amount, which includes the disposal fee for everything in it. We have a community, we have a system that works, and we want to do what's right, but we need to work within a framework that works within our community. So more to come on that. And just to finish it up, the administrative time to properly manage resident requests in some of our new programs. One of the things that I've stressed since I came here is we really want to have an excellent level of resident support. We want to make sure that when there's a call, that they get a call back. It's something that we work on day in and day out, and it does take up quite a bit of our time. But sometimes it's better to put that effort in upfront than to wait till an issue becomes a real problem. C and R projects, we're looking, and I believe this came out of the Economic Development Commission, we're looking at some, a modest wayfinding signage for town center at $15,000. Painting and refurbishing of the clock tower portion of the Eno building. It was painted about 10 years ago, but we're getting reports that there's some problems with some of the caulking and some of the other things. So we want to get up there again. This is something that you don't want to let fall into a state of disrepair. Oddly enough, when I started here, the clock was broken. It was broken for the first year I was here, and part of the last time we were up there, we were able to fix it. Nothing worse than having a broken clock on your downtown area buildings.
That's the one time you drive by.
Yeah, that's right. How consistent you are.
We've reduced our programmatic number for the Emerald Ashbore management. I believe originally we were anticipating $110,000 for this year. We've dropped it down to $36,500. We're wrapping that program up. Right now, this is forecasted over the next three years, it may get wrapped up in two years. It's been very successful, we've had very minimal pushback from residents whose trees, you know, in the front of their property have to be removed. Most of the time, by the time we get there, it's crystal clear that the tree is in decline. The sad thing with the ash trees is once they do start to decline, it's very rapid and they lose limbs. So we've been very aggressive about getting those down. We talked about the plow truck, and that's Cheryl's favorite picture. I believe she was in the truck that day that we took that picture. It was an absolute raging blizzard. I mean, if you're going to do a ride-along, that was the storm to do it in.
You driving along with the door open?
Door open, yeah, I noticed that too.
That's the driver jumping out.
After the third hour with Cheryl, he's had enough.
A little closer, a little closer.
He's like, "I am done listening to you."
Okay, lady, you drive.
Who's to say Cheryl wasn't driving? I don't know. I just came and picked her up at a certain point.
Is that why her insurance line item is up?
Again, in an effort for some transparency, one of the areas that we haven't always highlighted, but we have town aid road funding. This is the equipment that we have a schedule. We anticipate the replacement of all of our equipment within the highway department. So we have a couple of larger items on here. On the front-end loader, scheduled for replacement this year. We have a salt brine system that we would like to implement. That would be similar, or allow us a similar capability to what you see the DOT do, where a day before the storm, they'll go out, and you'll have the white roads. That system of the salt brine stays in place longer than the salt products that we're currently using. So it's something that we're evaluating. The other thing that I can tell you, with, for example, the asphalt trailer is one that we've already started talking to some of our surrounding towns. It's not something we're going to use five days a week. So if we can make an arrangement, and we can do that as a shared piece of equipment, that's something that we're going to look into.
Are there longer-term cost savings with the salt brine methodology?
That is what is reported. There's certainly initial cost savings associated with the potential to reduce overtime. But as with all things, I'm going to be honest, we're going to look at this very carefully before we pull the trigger on any of these systems. The state, for example, with their program, it certainly makes sense. Bloomfield's been using this system for about two years, and they're probably our first stop in making sure that we get the right system, the right size system. And if it's not saving them money, we're going to defer.
Is that, would that be in addition to the normal salting services that you provide?
That would be in addition, yeah.
Not a replacement, because we just put the salt shit in, right?
Yeah, right, right. No matter what we do, we are still going to use rock salt and treated rock salt. And right now, we actually have on the trucks, one of the things where this, we need to look at, is all of the trucks have the ability to carry liquid on them. And what they're able to do is they put a liquid magnesium chloride onto the salt right at the spinner. The reason and when we use that is for colder days, especially, we had a couple of weeks ago where it was, I think there was something on NBC 30, and perhaps they even called us, about at what temperature does salt stop working? Well, regular rock salt stops working much, at a much higher temperature than the treated rock salt. And then when we have the ability to essentially juice it up right at the spinner, that gave us that level of protection during those brutally cold days back in January.
Yeah.
So one of the things that we would look at with this is, do we want to have a completely separate truck driving around treating all of our mains? Or do we want to see if we can modify our existing trucks to do this? So. One of the things, again, with the condition of the state budget, we are looking at whether or not town aid road funding is really guaranteed in the years moving forward. So we have been judicious in how we've been using that account.
We're not planning on passing an anti-toll resolution, right? So isn't that the threat that if any town passes an anti-toll, they're going to get their town aid road cut?
Yeah. That came from downstate.
It's true.
I'm going to stay out of that one.
We don't have a lot of toll roads going through Simsbury.
I don't know, you've got to be careful, Sean. You don't want somebody to mishear that, that you're presenting toll roads in Simsbury.
I'm not. I am not.
Right here, we've got the pavement management. We're looking at a combination of funding sources. And in here, it's not shown, is we also have $120,000 in the operating budget. Some of the items in the operating budget would be crack sealing and chip sealing, certainly wouldn't qualify or be classified as capital items. As Maria said, everything comes down to what that baseline number is. For us, for our roadway preservation at this point, it's 1.3 million. And that's based on current asphalt prices. Asphalt prices went down for a couple of years, they're starting to creep back up. But 1.3 million paves about 10 miles of road. With 165 miles of road in town, average lifespan of an overlay of 17 years, if we keep going 10 years, each and every year, the overall condition stays the same. Sidewalk resurfacing program, I think we touched on this pretty heavily a couple of weeks back, and we're budgeting $300,000 for that. For the sewer department, so shifting gears back to the WPCA, we are looking at two capital projects. The first is sewer lining. There's a beautiful picture there of a broken sewer pipe. And what they actually do is take a resin impregnated sleeve, they put it into an existing sanitary sewer. It inverts, usually through either hot water that's poured into it. It cures in place, hardens, and now becomes essentially a new pipe inside of that old broken pipe. They then send down a little robotic machine that cuts out all of the laterals that feed into it. Sounds like Star Wars, but it's really been done for about 25, 30 years. It is the most cost-effective way to rehabilitate sewers. It's minimally invasive to the neighborhood. You're not digging up the street, you're not interfering with the asphalt. They're in and out in one day. I did a lot of this in my past life at MDC. The other wonderful thing this does is it tightens up the sewers so that groundwater is not infiltrating your sewer, so that Tony and down at the plant is not treating clean groundwater. And by doing that, it drastically reduces operating costs. So incredibly nerdy, but very exciting project for some of us. The SCADA system, it's the way that they operate their five pump stations, all from central location. It tracks and measures all the data, this is how the magic happens. It's time to get that upgraded. And both of these projects are not actually coming out of the towns' reserves. These are part of the enterprise fund reserves. So we're classifying them as CIP, but in many ways, they really just fall under the WPCA's enterprise fund budget. Okay, there we go.
All right. The, you can't, there's no way that you can, eventualities are, you know, unintended eventualities. So I'm not saying, not questioning the facility maintenance ones. Like, Jeff, you talked about this building, and you talked about Eno, you didn't expect and such. But from a historical perspective, over the last couple of years, does every, almost every one of these facility maintenance line items goes up? Is that what happens every, has gone up? Is that what happens every year? I mean, is that properly forecasting, or is it just...
No, 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 not at all. Eno went down last year. In last year's budget cycle, we believed Eno was going to be closed for three and a half months.
You mentioned, yeah.
And as such, we reduced the electrical costs, we reduced the natural gas costs. So we lowered everything, presuming that it was going to be closed. It was a nice benefit to our residents that we were able to keep it open while the renovations were going on, which then prohibited us from turning the heat way down, shutting the air conditioning off, and doing all of the other things we would have been able to do if it was closed to the public. And because of that, we're now seeing, all I'm doing is level-setting it back. All of the buildings go up essentially with the cost of living. They go up slightly, but not much. And this year, actually, the town hall overall operating cost, I believe, went down, and that was due to some of the utility savings.
One of the things you did years ago was institute the, basically, the electricity in gasoline and diesel purchases, right?
Yes.
A consultant that you go out with, and so you've been able to substantially mitigate our increases there as a result of your proactive management years ago, right?
That's correct.
And that's really helped us see little to no changes over the life of it.
Yeah, and what, like, for example, right now, on natural gas, we're at the utility rate. So we're buying it directly from CNG. However, each year, we're speaking with our energy consultants to say, is this the year that we want to purchase our natural gas directly? And we have done that in the past when the market forces said that was the smart choice.
Just to go back to Eno for one second, because I spent a lot of time there. But the number that you have for building improvements, is that just the clock tower? Or is there anything else that's going to get done on...
When you say building improvements, are you looking in the operating budget? Or are you looking in the capital?
No, I'm looking in the operating budget.
In the operating budget, I believe that's the number that's just the routine maintenance, minor paintings, basic repairs, yeah. That's for the little things that we know are going to pop up, the things, one of the spindles on the railing breaks.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Tom. So would folks like to break for lunch, or do the public safety presentation? I'm, what were you saying?
I love getting through the first page, it's kind of like my emotional, that's my OCD, though, so that doesn't, you know...
And then we could let...
Yes, agreed. Chief, all yours.
Is that what that is?
Looks good, chief.
You going to say no to the chief?
Don't know.
It is still morning, good morning. Thank you for taking me before lunch, I think. So as the theme has gone, there's been some transparency actions on our budgets as well. The budgets today for public safety include police budget, the dispatch budget, which is, which is brand-new. In the years past, that was put in with the police budget. The animal control budget, and emergency management, which was civil preparedness in years past. Some minor changes, as you can see, the police budget has gone down 7.5% or decreased. But again, that's just because of the way that it's being shown now on paper. So actually, the overall increase in all of those is 4.3%. Taking a look at the police budget, or the proposed budget, it consists of all the sworn personnel, which are 38 sworn members, and two and a half employees in the records division, and one secretary. For dispatch, there are seven dispatchers in there, seven full-time dispatchers for all of our communication needs. One animal control officer, and then our crossing guards, it says 2.86 full-time employees. And we have 10 posts throughout town. We did eliminate one post last year. There aren't 10 crossing guards, we have some on reserve. But basically, there are 10 posts throughout town. So going over our programs and our services for each real briefly. For the police department, to detect, deter, and investigate criminal activity. For example, the most frequent investigation that we have in town is some sort of a larceny, whether it's thefts from our yards, our homes, our businesses, or our vehicles. And as we have seen the last couple of years, a definite increase in thefts from our vehicles and vehicles from town. We handle emergencies, medical emergencies and accidents are probably the most prevalent. We've handled, last year alone, almost 1,600 medical emergencies we respond to. We are first responders. And we went to 531 accidents throughout town. Roadway safety is another one of our major services and programs. We provide traffic enforcement, conduct traffic surveys to determine the volume of cars that travel on our roads, the types of cars, the speeds. All valuable information in determining what we can do to either slow speeds down, make the roads safer, or calm the traffic. We look at patrolling our greenways and our parks, our business district, and our neighborhoods on bicycles and in cruisers, and so much more relating to roadway safety. For education, we have our school resource officers. So they provide a very large educational component in what they do every single day. We have a cadet program. So right now, we have approximately 13 young kids who are part of the cadet program, which used to be called our explorer program many years ago. We've had that since around 2001. Very good educational outreach through our social media. And we do presentations throughout the year at all different types of venues. And then for the police, the last one I wanted to put in there is quality of life. It's one of our major services and programs. And so we connect people to social services, to health professionals, and then we help solve problems that may not be traditionally criminal issues. For dispatch, the services and programs, this is where all the 911 calls, and now, starting this past year, text messages are received, as well as the routine calls. So anytime somebody needs police, fire, or ambulance service, they call the dispatch unit. These are emergency and non-emergency calls for police, fire, and ambulances, and then a bunch of other resources that I'll get into later on. The dispatch unit also documents all of our police activity from the very beginning. They have a computer-aided dispatch program. So when a call comes in, that starts everything. We have a lot of information readily accessible to the dispatcher. The dispatcher provides emergency information, walking somebody through CPR, walking through somebody how to make a situation safer. And then they coordinate resources, all different resources in town, whether it's highway department needs, regional needs. If we need assistance from other towns for police, we can do that. Any state needs, federal, and then private needs, such as tow trucks. For the animal control officer, I think a lot of you are well aware of Mark Rudeus and the services that Mark provides. He is one of the only ones that I'm aware of that provides both domestic and non-domesticated services. He is, he has his trapper's license, he has his wildlife nuisance license. The services that he provides to this community are tremendous. He does a lot of education, a lot of presentations, both through SCTV, through our Facebook page, but then also in-person, he'll go on visit groups, whether it's young kids or a presentation at Eno, or to any private groups he's meeting with the Rotary Club coming up soon. And then one of the main... And then one of the main services and programs is basically the general public health. He really encourages rabies vaccinations and licensing, and we are one of a few communities that does a survey every single year. He goes around and knocks on doors of thousands of residents. I think it's around 5,000 he does a year, and he makes sure that if there's a dog there, it's licensed. And if it's not, then he takes, he takes the appropriate action to get that dog licensed. And one of the key parts of that is not spreading rabies. So part of that licensing is you're required to have a rabies vaccination. So very, very important part for our general public health, not just of our animals, but of our citizens as well.
Chief, I'm just going to jump in quickly on that. That is another good example of an unfunded state mandate. There is a state mandate that says we are supposed to reach about 20% of all the homes in our community on an annual basis, and that essentially, an animal control officer is physically verifying whether or not that there is a dog living there. And right now, we're one of only about 12 communities in the state that are actually complying with that unfunded state mandate. So I think that's quite an accomplishment and a testament to, to Mark's commitment to ensuring that happens. It certainly, that is a very, that can be a very, very challenging task, and I really appreciate his efforts on that.
That has been done at least since he came here in 2005, and he doesn't just stop at that, whatever that number is that the state determines, he keeps going because there's a, there's a huge benefit to that. And then there's a, a reduction also on the amount of license fees that we have to pay to the state. So some money is saved in doing this as well. And then the fourth and final of the budgets that make up the overall budget is the emergency management. And most of the funds in that account, roughly 4,500, 4,600, goes towards our town, Everbridge, the emergency notification system. The system that, that is not used for true emergencies, because we use the state program, but this is for, you know, snow closings, things that, that may be of a lesser sort of true emergency, so we can notify people this way. We also use this system for notifying our town personnel, and we use that downstairs in the police department for daily notifications of shifts that are open, working private duty jobs, and stuff like that.
Is that separate from the school districts notifying parents about?
It is, yeah, it's a different system. That is. So the areas of focus for this coming year, you know, not only do we want to train our members for, for policing today, but we want to prepare them for the future. Professional development throughout the department is extremely important to me. Whether it's the future investigative or community policing techniques, or assignments, or promotions, we have to set our members up for things that are come up, that are going to come along tomorrow, next week, or, or next year. Policing has become so complex, technical, and demanding. The profession is highly critiqued and constantly changing, and is dangerous. Our supervision needs have changed because of all of these things that, that continue to change on us. We need strong organizational unity, we need transparency, and accountability, and opportunities for success. So I'm looking at enhancing our supervision. I want a level of supervision that fosters growth and demands the highest standards in policing. And I'll take, talk a little bit later on at how we started to move further in that direction. I plan to maintain all the programs that we have been providing, such as the Citizens' Police Academy, the Junior Police Academy, the Senior Picnic, the Officer Phil Program, the Cadet Program, and there's probably 25 or so programs that we do and that we have done annually that have been very successful. These programs have great benefits. They will maintain our status as first responders also for medical calls, administer first aid with a variety of medical supplies to include oxygen, tourniquets, and bandages. We will continue to carry and use Narcan for our opioid overdoses, and provide lifesaving measures through CPR, and carrying and using AEDs in all of our cruisers. This budget, another, another area of focus is replacing equipment through the regular budget process, but then, or operating process, I'm sorry, and the CNR process, and maintaining resources through these programs in regional, state, and federal initiatives. So some of the budget highlights. As I stated earlier, dispatch has been separated from the police budget for transparency. The dispatch budget is mostly made up of salaries, very much like the, the police. It's around 80 to 87% of, of salaries. There was an increase in full-time salaries in the police dispatch and animal control budgets due to negotiated contractual step increases, and then an estimated general wage increase for, for the police officers who are out of contract this year. The Board of Ed shares the cost of each of the two school resource officers, so in the past, that was deducted from our budget, so much like other shared resources, that's going back into our budget and being shown as a revenue elsewhere. So again, no, no net impact to the overall budget, but it does show an increase in our budget of almost $91,000 for those school resource officers. More budget highlights. The budget overtime has decreased each year, even though wages and demands have increased. So we watch the overtime, you know, like a hawk. Every single day, we watch the overtime. We've taken a look at what is actually creating our overtime and where we can, where we can adjust for that. And we have reduced it. We've taken several measures over the years to reduce the, the overtime. Still, with those efforts each year, we go over the budget amount of overtime, and we rely on other accounts within our budget to reconcile that. So last year, we made some efforts, good positive efforts, to make our training overtime account reflect really what we're needed. And, and that worked out, that worked out well. What didn't work out so well is we didn't then have the enough for our regular overtime. In fact, we were $5,000 less this current year than we were the year before with the overtime. So, you know, again, salaries go up, things happen. You know, for instance, this past fiscal, this past fall, I should say, you know, with our homicide investigation, in a matter of a two and a half week period, there's about $13,000 of overtime alone right there. And when you're looking at a, an overtime budget of $75,000 or $175,000, it's, it's really a big chunk out of that for one small period of time. So my original request for overtime, you know, this year was an additional 75, almost 76,000. And I think that more accurately reflects where our need is and where we need, where we need to be. But as you're aware, Marie has proposed, you know, sort of a three-year plan to get us up to where we, where we need. As mentioned earlier, the move toward enhanced supervision and professional development of our personnel requires time, education, and opportunities. In September of 2018, we began this transformation with monthly staff meetings. We had staff meetings maybe once a year for the last 20 or so years, so we've implemented now every single month. You know, unlike many other departments, we work 24/7. So to have those staff members available to us who are working the midnight shift or working days off, you know, Monday through Friday, it costs, it costs overtime. So there's roughly about $15,000 just to have staff meetings a year. And that's taking into consideration that some of those members are going to take comp time as opposed to pay, but it's roughly $15,000 just to run that. And I think it's a very important aspect of us enhancing our supervision capabilities. And we're already seeing much, the must-need impact on these meetings. We didn't replace the second-in-command position, the captain, one year ago when Chief Ingraham retired. The captain position was an unaffiliated position with no overtime. So instead, another lieutenant was promoted, and it's a union position subject to overtime. So combining the, the two lieutenants and the responsibilities that they have as being members of the command staff, it's an additional 15,000 to 16,000 estimated each, each year for their needs. And I can definitely talk about this later on if the, if the conversation comes up, but you know, there are a lot of things that they do that in years past wasn't, wasn't needed to be funded for because that was the position of the captain, and worked, worked beyond 40 hours a week. We are also anticipating a medical leave in dispatch during the upcoming fiscal year, and this happens to be a position that has to be filled every time this person is vacant. So we are estimating about a $20,000 increase during the fiscal year just to cover that, that one position. There's no way to get around sort of that position. So that's one reason for the increase.
Yeah. And Chief, I'm just going to quickly jump in here on overtime. So I actually find, and this is where I get a little nerdy, public safety overtime to be a really fascinating topic. And if this is something that you would like to learn more about in the future, I'd be happy to have us present a little more on it. But a lot of times, folks don't understand or, or may not realize is that, again, this police work is something that needs to be backfilled, right? So again, we talked about this a little bit on Monday night, but sometimes you get administrative positions. If somebody's on vacation, well, you know, when you come back, nobody's filled in for you, and you just have to catch up. But with the nature of police work, right, we have to provide that coverage 24 hours a day, you know, seven days a week, all year long. And so really, what happens is if you think about all of the officers we have, and all of the leave that they're entitled to, whether it's vacation, or if you have a sick leave, those shifts need to be covered. So unless you have a model, we typically will have minimum staffing requirements that are contractual, or contractually obligated to. Minimum staffing is what it's often referred to. Unless you're scheduling above and beyond that per shift, you're automatically going to have to fill those leave requests with overtime. So again, let's say if you have a minimum staffing require, requirement of six people per shift, but you have seven people scheduled per that shift, if one person takes leave, it's okay because you're just dipping down to that minimum contractual requirement. But if you are on a particular shift with the bare minimum that we're contractually obligated to have for minimum staffing, you're automatically filling those shifts with overtime. It's just sort of unfortunately, it comes along with the territory. Again, a lot of folks oftentimes just don't understand that. And again, with the nature of having to, to fill shifts at all times, a magic number for us where we, if we're down about three staff members, it's going to trigger significant overtime increases for us. And oftentimes, that will happen. You know, you get somebody who might have a non-work-related injury, perhaps a medical leave of absence that is work-related. But if we're down about three people, our overtime costs are just automatically going to start increasing because of the nature of the scheduling with public safety. So those are some of the things that it's, again, it's very difficult to control, filling shifts related to leave and how that impacts overtime. And those are things that, again, we just, it's very, very difficult to control those expenses.
Just a question. So this year, we would, it looks like we expect to be about 56,000 over budget for, and yet we're, we're budgeting a $25,000, $25,000 increase for next year. So that remaining 36,000, is that not going to exist because of management? Or, how do we manage that, I guess?
Sure, sure. So most likely because of some of our staffing transition. We do believe we'll have some salary savings. Currently, we're budgeted from the salary line item, expecting to be fully staffed. But again, we do think there's going to be some transition there. We currently are in transition, and do think we'll have some salary savings to potentially offset that account. And you'll recall, last year, we did discuss, and your board did support increasing that amount. Again, realistically, we do think we're probably underbudgeting that account by about $75,000. And I think we tried to bite it off all in, in one attempt last year, and that unfortunately didn't work out so well for us. So we talked about it and said, okay, well, maybe, you know, if we tried to more gradually approach that to get us to a number that, that is more realistic, that this might be a little more tolerable in terms of a budgetary increase.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So the 20,000 for dispatch, is that in, is that the contractual service in the police department, or where is that getting budgeted from a line item standpoint?
Sure.
The, the 20, that's in the dispatch?
Dispatch overtime.
So that's in the dispatch overtime?
Yes. It should say 44,000 dispatch overtime. So we, I anticipate, you know, generally, $24,000 of overtime coming out of dispatch, that's approximately what it is now.
And then another 20.
Now that has been separated, now another 20.
All right. So then help me out with the contractual services in the police budget going up 27,670.
So that was a moving around, so that was like recoding.
Okay.
So actually, in our operating, it, it went down. What happened is, so for instance, we have our computer software.
Yeah.
Where that used to be in, in another item, now maybe in contractual services.
Gotcha.
A lot of things were juggled around to, to better fit in there. We had equipment rentals as one of the categories. We don't rent any equipment.
So that's basically, that's a net line item.
We put those in the right categories.
Gotcha. Okay.
And, and again, I certainly can discuss, you know, however long you'd like to, and overtime at another time, but, you know, it seems like we're constantly in transition, as Maria said, not having the 38 that we're authorized to have. Right now, we are at 37, but one is in the academy. We also have the potential for two retirees next year, and things do happen, and we have had, you know, people out on significant non-work-related injuries. So we've, we constantly keep meeting this. If we were to hire one more officer, that's not going to make up, just by the nature of what we do, that's not going to make up for this overtime, because we work three shifts seven days a week, you know, all, all year round. So it is, a lot of it is, it is filling those, those minimum numbers that we have, and I think those minimum numbers are, you know, are, they work for us. And generally, it gives us the right amount of officers on the road at one time. So for trends and challenges, as, you know, Mike Glidden had mentioned earlier today, you know, the, the actual projected growth of town, and we've seen, I think, a significant amount over the last couple of years, and I think we're going to see quite a bit more. Single-family homes, multifamily homes, mixed-use properties, these all place additional demands on the police department. There are over 500 new units expect, expected in town this year alone, and then a couple thousand in the next couple of years if they come up. So it has a significant impact on us, not just in our ability to patrol, but, and, and not just in the increased numbers, but the things that happen when people live close to each other, and the things that happen when there are now more intersections. So there's a lot of, and even certain populations, you know, if we're, if we're attracting a certain age population, well, then our medical calls may, you know, may be going up too. So as far as criminal activity, trends and challenges, we're fortunate. We're very fortunate to be in a community with a low crime rate, and it speaks about the values in this community. The police department plays a vital role in maintaining that low crime rate. We're a preventative and a responsive department. A lot of what we do is preventative. We want to be seen out there. We want to be engaged in the community. We want to do whatever we can to make sure that crime doesn't happen. When it does happen, then we're going to respond to that. But we must be able to do both to support the quality of life that this, this community values. We've experienced a drastic increase in car thefts, not just us, but the community and the entire state, and then thefts from cars in the last two years. The fraud and computer-related crimes investigations are growing more and more complex each year. So we are not just accepting, taking reports, you know, we want to be able to investigate and try to figure out, you know, who's committing these crimes, and they're very difficult and very, very lengthy and time-consuming. The time that is afforded to investigating family violence, child abuse and neglect, and juvenile crimes increases with every year and with every legislative change. And there are, there are often annual legislative change in each of those areas. Another trend and challenge is roadway safety. The town supports multi-use on our roadways and paths. Enforcement and education needs grow with increased use and development and population. The safety of our roads is one of our highest priorities. With our investigative demands that I spoke about, our preventative patrols, and our community policing style, which in and of itself takes a considerable amount more time than strictly a reactive police response, we've not been able to keep up with the requests for traffic enforcement. We've been able to keep up with traffic enforcement in general, but we haven't had the animal, the traffic control officer, Gary Gray, in that position since October of 2017, because we've had vacancies and we've been in transition, we've needed to staff the road. So it's left up to the patrol officers in between going to calls and stopping in at places and doing what they do best to then also run traffic enforcement. We get, we get calls, we get emails, we get requests, you know, all the time for traffic enforcement on a road. Whether, whether we feel it's needed or not, we like to get out there, we like to assess it, and that's what we haven't really been able to do because that was what Gary did a lot. If somebody called and said, we have a lot of speeding on our street, and, you know, we know it's potentially an isolated problem, Gary would go out there, and he would go out there, you know, consistently and make contact with the people who complain. We just don't have the resources to do that now.
To that point, Chief, is, is there an opportunity, or are we at a point where we need to look at what other communities do in terms of traffic coming from a roadway standpoint? I mean, again, I, I know the concerns with speed bumps and
Yep.
road narrowing, but if, if, if we're not able to allocate the resources that we want to there, does it make sense to go to that?
So we're constantly looking at what is sort of the best practices and what other communities are doing, what has worked for others. And actually, we've done this quite a bit, and I'll just take a moment to say that, that, you know, this, this last year or so has been tremendous as far as the collaborative efforts, the, just, I mean, we've always worked well together, but it's just been, it's been incredible. So we have LTA meetings, and we talk about what, you know, what, what the issues are and what has worked, and it's, it's a very collaborative look. And we have resources outside of town that we look at and that we, that we ask. we ask to come in. And we have used one person in particular, this is all he does. He looks at traffic calming, he looks at the MUTTTCD guidelines and what would work best for our community, and what, he travels all throughout the state. He's in here very frequently. So we are doing that.
All right. And I appreciate that. And selfishly, my wife's not going to vote for me in November because of, you know, the speeding on David Drive and otherwise. And I know that, I mean, that inundates you guys with those phone calls. There's at least nine families on the street that are constantly calling. And, you know, that's putting pressure on dispatch, is putting pressure on resources. And, you know, if there's, you know, that's kind of the hidden cost of all that you guys are doing. And then I have to make my annual, on the motor vehicle thefts, most of them continue to be people leaving their keys in the car, correct?
All of them.
Yes. Is there anything we can do as a municipality to help get that message across? Further deter, I mean, we charge for false alarms. I know a crime was committed, but I'm reasonably positive that car would not have been stolen if the keys were not in it. And therefore, you wouldn't have to investigate. I mean, is there anything we can do?
I don't know. Along those lines, I would say, I would say no. I'm not interested in finding people for.
Stupidity?
Well, the next trend could be, you know, somebody's leaving their, you know, something outside on their porch.
Yeah.
And it could get stolen.
Understood.
We went through probably in the mid-two thousands, certain cars, their tires were being taken, the rims were being taken, the Nissans and the Hondas. And you can't tell them, say, if they park in a garage, if they, if they have a garage. But I understand because we're dealing with it. You know, we're, we had nineteen last year, and on a normal year, we have two or three cars that are stolen.
I mean, we're watching it on social media. I mean, people continue to be shocked and appalled that this is happening.
Yes.
I don't know how we get the message. Do not leave your car keys in your car.
And the few times that we have encountered the thefts in the act, we just, we can't pursue. We can't pursue. The balance is just, it's not worth it.
Right.
You know, we attempt, we hope they stop, they don't stop. We have been able to follow up on some of them. We have made some arrests, and we're currently looking at some now. But it's, and that's after the fact.
Yeah. And I appreciate the efforts. It's just, it's a waste of your department's time because it's so easily preventable for this. And again, perhaps, again, I don't want it to happen to anybody, but it's a very easy change in our community. You lock your doors and don't leave your keys in your car.
Can I ask one other quick question in the interest of what the public seems to think you guys do? If people take pictures of cars maybe engaging in infractions on their cellphones and send them to you, do you have to do anything with it?
We do not have to, but we will.
You will?
Yeah.
Because people always ask, you know, if I take a picture of a car, you know, parked in a handicap space, or running, if I have a video of them running a stop sign, or whatever it is, and I send that to the police department, they want to know if you're going to do something about that.
Yes. So we are limited in what we can do because, you know, a picture of a vehicle speeding or going through a stop sign, it's a little difficult to, you know, then prove. A video is a little bit better.
Right.
But we will definitely take some action on that. And that just may mean contacting the registered owner, trying to find out who is driving and correct that behavior. But we definitely will take action. Very difficult. And if you were to poll the other agencies that surround us, some will not do that.
That's my understanding. And I know we see a lot of that, you know, out on social media and things, but.
Yeah. And so we, you know, we try to look at it as from a sort of a problem-solving, you know, side, and not strictly an enforcement, because oftentimes, we can enforce. And a lot of other things that we do that are very similar to that is, you know, we had tractor trailers recently traveling up Notch Road and Holcomb Street, and they're traveling at very reasonable speeds, but it was just this huge increase. And everybody was wondering why. We were able to track down who they belong to and reach out to them, and it hasn't now happened in weeks. They didn't realize that, you know, that it was a potential hazard. There's some narrow bridges there, and people aren't used to that activity, and they were very compliant.
Right. And just saying that maybe people shouldn't be using their cellphones to do that while they're driving.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Definitely not, right. So that's not an excuse.
So maybe that could backfire on you.
Right, right. So by law, that's not an excuse. You can't, you can't use your phone while you're driving. Probably very much like, you know, reading while you're riding a bike.
Exactly.
Probably not the smartest thing to do, but you may have all done it, though.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Okay. And then overtime, and I can't stress enough how important this is for enhanced supervision and our professional development of the department. And just a real cup, a couple of quick examples. So I have a breakdown of our overtime for the first six months of this fiscal year. And a lot of it is, you know, an officer will be held over at an accident. That accident will happen at 2:30, and they're there till 3:15, they're there till 3:30. So you have fifteen minutes or a half an hour. It doesn't make any sense to try to break that up and get that person, you know, and sort of reduce the amount of time that somebody has with somebody. We have a lot of cases like that, a lot of domestic family violence offenses that are like that, where it's just more important for the continuity of the same officer to stay there instead of a handoff, try the exchange of information in front of the person, and then go back just to get back by. There's a lot of that. Moving on just to staffing levels then. We've worried about our staffing levels for years, you know, based on the community policing style of the department and the mentioned trends and challenges. In comparison to the region and the state and the nation, you know, we're significantly understaffed if you look at numbers. The ratio of officers to 1,000 residents in Simsbury is roughly between 1.5 to 1.6. And the comparable towns that we look at, it's 1.8. The state is 1.9. New England average is 1.8, and the national average is 1.9. So we're considerably less. You know, we currently have thirty-eight sworn members, and it would take an additional five to seven officers to get us up to that number standard. I don't think that necessarily you need to use that number as this tells everything, because, like I said earlier, we're fortunate, we're in a community that has a very low crime rate. But I think that number is also a bit telling, and something that we need to really consider down the line, especially with our growth. You know, our DPH is predicting, you know, predicting 3,000 increase by 2023. And we're already seeing all these developments. The current need is not necessarily with the officers that are in view of the public on a daily basis, the patrol function that everybody usually sees, but it's with the investigative support, supervision, and management functions of the department. It's having enough personnel to keep the traffic enforcement out there and potentially putting a second traffic enforcement out there during the evening shift. We have a lot of demands for that during the hours from three to 11 at night. It's with the investigative needs, being able to keep up with technology. These cases are getting longer and longer for us and much more complicated, and we're looking for resources elsewhere. We're constantly being helped by places like Hartford and Glastonbury who have people dedicated to technology. And then we, you know, then we take their resources. It's with the changing criminal mind, finding new ways all the time to create victims. And then just investigating in a timely manner. The last thing I want to hear is that somebody did not receive a call back from an officer. It's been two days, it's been a week, whatever the case may be, because we just didn't have time to get to that. It's with the management of the programs, all these programs that we do, including accreditation. That's where we need to see, at some point, where we need to see more members on the department. And then within the checks and balances, and that speaks to the supervision of the department. I'm worried about the staffing level of the department because of the growth of the town, the ever-increasing demands and breadth of police services, and the need for the highest standards that this community deserves. I've offered several suggestions on how to move forward with staffing levels, and I can speak to those at any time. For our CNR projects, requesting three police vehicles, again, and, you know, we changed this a year or so ago where we used to budget for different parts to the cruiser inside the operating budget, and it just makes sense. You need a cruiser, this is how much it costs. So, and the cost of cars go up, and they go up approximately 5% each year. But a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to replace three cars and completely outfit it. And that's not new MDTs in the cars, that's not new cages, that's not new sirens, that's all the old stuff being put back in, that those are separate budgets or separate requests if we need to replace those, which we're not anticipating this coming year. And then a radio system feasibility study, so this is phase two, so we just finished up phase one. This is thirty-five thousand. It's for consulting services for the design, requests for proposals, and the procurement of a new radio system. We have recording systems in our two interview rooms. One interview room is secured in the booking facility, and the other one is not as secured in our general police area where we have our offices. And all this is per a state mandate, a state law, that if you are interrogating somebody who, you know, they're under custody or in custody, and it is a certain level of a crime, it has to be recorded. So it's capital A felonies. Basically, it has to be recorded. So we had this system, I believe it was 2013 or 2014, that we purchased it. It was around eighteen thousand dollars. It was, again, mandated. That system is not working well now. We've had significant problems with it. It's outside of the warranty. So we're looking to replace that for thirty-five thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. And then we're also looking for security camera upgrades. These are security cameras around the town hall, outside of the building, and then within the police department as well. So a lot of the cameras have gone from once operating in color to now operating in black and white. And also, our server just cannot handle, we have twenty-nine cameras on there now. The new system we're looking at could hold up to 100 cameras. Every time we replace a camera, it's a much better quality camera, and it takes up a whole lot more space. So we go from X amount of time that we have in storage, and it keeps getting smaller and smaller. So this will give us some significantly more time it will replace, and it will add cameras to enhance our security efforts on the outside of our building here at town hall.
Chief, I'm just going to jump in quickly here. And we're going to talk about this a little bit more in the afternoon when we go over the improvements we made to our CNR budgeting, the six-year plan method, as well as accounting for all sources of revenue. And so this is a good example of some of our smaller capital needs that we're proposing would be paid for through the private duty fund, again, looking at using that in a responsible manner, but also for transparency purposes, if we're going to be making the smaller capital purchases, documenting that through our budgeting process, and actually creating the project on the books. So this is an example of that. And again, when we work through the CNR fund, sort of the full overview later this afternoon, you'll see these and those proposed revenue sources.
So that's it. But just sort of overall, as I mentioned earlier, like our operating side, if you take out payroll and associated things, you know, we're down almost 4%. So the increase to the budgets, to all the budgets, basically, besides animal control and emergency management, it's personnel and overtime. Overtime was the biggest driving factor for this proposed budget.
Chief, is a thirty-five thousand dollar camera system necessary to comply with the state mandate?
It is. So the state has guidelines on the systems. They have to be standalone systems. We can't attach it to any current system now. There has to be limited users. We can't have the ability to rewrite all of those. There's a whole bunch of standards that they put out, and we still have to meet those. And those have been slightly tweaked since 2013 when it came out. But, you know, that's what's needed.
Because I set up a recording studio in my home for a thousand bucks, and if we could get away with that.
Yes. So there are redundancies, and I'll give you an example. The current system that we had, so we had somebody come in for an interview, and we definitely wanted this recorded, both audio and visual. There are two cameras, two angles, in one of the rooms, actually in both of the rooms. And the system went down. According to us, we're looking at a black screen. It wasn't there. There's redundancy set up there. It's being recorded elsewhere as well. So it may not be as simple as, you know, the systems that we may have at a home. But it is a big jump from the original eighteen thousand that we paid only six or seven years ago. You know, it's doubling. And not many things do that. But this is through Axon, which is the parent company of Taser. And what Maria and I discussed prior to these meetings was the idea of body-worn cameras and how that may look in the out years. And so we were able to actually get this price down along with the price of body cameras, because we were working together. It's the same company. It's actually less expensive than what they'd originally told us.
Okay. Just to be clear, this is not body cameras at this point?
Yeah, correct.
Because that didn't go so well the last time we talked.
No, no, that, and that's a much different number.
Yeah.
No, this is strictly the two interview rooms.
Yeah, that was a fun one. Do we still get anything? Are we still able to resell the patrol cars?
We are.
For a nominal amount?
Yes. And when SUVs first came out, we had a very good return on those. And now we don't. So right now, we have the latest quote for one of them is forty-five hundred dollars for a three-year old.
But that plays into the part of how we replace them, why we keep them as long as we do.
It does.
Because we've been questioned on three years, five years, 10 years, et cetera.
Yes.
We need to maintain working vehicles. So from a maintenance and a service standpoint, your department, and you have done a ton of analysis, that
Yes.
the maintenance schedule makes sense and actually saves, or the replacement schedule actually saves us money.
It does.
Right.
Yeah, it certainly does. And the highway department looks at our cruisers every two weeks, and, you know, the utmost importance is that we get to somewhere, if we have to quickly, we get their safety. We have all of our equipment working, and we entrust them to make sure that that's working. And that works fantastic. The cars take a beating. You know, they're only three years old, and they only have seventy-five thousand miles on them, but they've been running. They've been running for three years. And they've been running off-road, they've been running in fields all over the place, hard starts, hard stops. You know, we keep those cars running. You see them running almost all the time because of the Narcan. It has to stay at a certain temperature in those cars. So a three-year car, a cruiser, is not your typical three-year.
No, I understand that. And again, yeah, not a place I'm looking to save money because it's compromising officer safety, public safety, otherwise not, not a place to go cutting.
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I agree. Okay. With that, let's take a break. Do we think coming back at 1:15 would be okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, 1:15. Thank you.
Yes, I agree.